Welcome, everyone, to tonight's study session. Just remind everybody about our ground rules. This is a meeting for council to ask their questions and hear presentations. And so if anybody needs to have a conversation, they can go out into the area where we usually meet. And what are the fun things? Council reminds you about cell phones, unless you're stuffed for the meeting. I know some of you put that on your cellphone. I think that all covers tonight's stuff. So my report, last week, Councilor Seymour and I went to Jefferson County Mayor's and Commissioners' meeting. They talked about housing for the homeless. They had different looks at housing from tiny homes to attached and the different kinds of attachment you could have. They are, and I told you this, that they are having county managers or city managers and county manager look at this and take it further because each city's doing, we need to get coordinated to know what everybody's doing. Then I went to Adams Kelly Luncheon. Debbie Tuttle, who is their North Glenns EDC person, is retiring. And so they have a new award there. It's called Game Changer Award, and she was presented that. She has been a wonderful person to Westminster. I know when I first got on council, she just is willing to share anything, talk to you, help you understand stuff. They've been a good partner. And then went with Parks and Rec to Adams County to receive two grants from Open Space. They got 1.9 million for that, so congratulations to them. Then went to Hometown Christmas down in Historic Westminster. It was freezing, but good. And want to thank Rich Newman and Parks and Rec and Library for helping with the new lights for the tallest Christmas tree lit in the state. Saturday was Victorian Christmas at the museum. It had great turnout. We even had people in period costumes, so it was fantastic. City Hall lighting on Saturday. And for weeks, I've watched the elves working when it was nice weather, so they didn't have to freeze too much, which I'm glad. But Saturday night was just, the only word I could think of was super telefragilistic exialidosus. It was fantastic. And so thanks to all who helped with that, especially with the events that night and entertainment. And then last night, the fire department, this is their fifth night, tomorrow night's their sixth night. They have been, if you haven't seen the fire truck, I've got pictures, but it's lit up. It's beautiful, and it's the old sea graves. Santa comes on it and meets with the kids there, so we're in open space. We haven't gone back to houses yet. And people signed up, they take 25 cars a night. And Nutmeg showed up last night and took pictures for everybody. And you got to watch the magic in it, and Nutmeg loves this time of year. And then this Friday, I have lunch with the Northern Adams County. Anyone else?
So I mentioned last week that I would provide just a quick overview of what the Dr. Cog session was last November. And aside from approving the subregional call for tip number three, we had an overview of a couple of things. And I would suggest, taking a look at the, there is a 2021 annual report on traffic congestion that, I guess Dr. Cog does this every year. And so it's really interesting to see regionally how we've, how we were doing within the COVID era. And just they're kind of, they're tracking the recovery of traffic congestion and just where are we going as a region? And has COVID really impacted our traffic patterns or not? I mean, so it's a good, quick summary. And I can send over this, this link so that you guys can all just take a quick look at it. And then this, this week, we have a work session for Dr. Cog. And it's going to be focused on how we handle housing regionally. And the feedback from the, all of the cities when we did the original just brainstorming session was really for Dr. Cog to be a convener and to just help get information, help get cities the, you know, connected to the funds that they're looking for and or just help OLS access to new opportunities. So that's what they're going to flesh out a little bit more this week.
Just two quick things. One, the EAB canceled their meeting for the last month, which would have been on last Wednesday. They didn't, their chair, I know, is out of town dealing with some personal stuff. And they just, he said, they just didn't have enough content to go through to meet, so they didn't meet. It sounds like they may plan on meeting in December, but I don't know yet. I know also the other thing I was going to bring up was the inclusivity board was working on a statement around the Q shooting, Q Club shooting. I don't know where that's at. I was trying to, I can't get their page up, so I'm not sure if they worked that out or not. But I know that they were working on a statement that they wanted to make. So again, I'm not sure where it's at or if they finished it, but just thought I'd let you know that they were working on something.
A couple of things on Rocky Flats. Rocky Flats needs to reappoint, and I just assumed that we're going to stay with our representative and alternate. But the other very important thing, which I don't view as a risk, but is something that we should be aware of, is Rocky Flats found a whole bunch of PFOAs. The FOAs are these compounds that the EPA, the federal EPA, is toying with having strict mandates on drinking water supplies. And they're really hard to get out because we have a much less contaminated source of water from Clear Creek with only six cities sending us their sewage. We have a pretty small one. The last report I saw is we had a very small amount of PFOAs. We're like Thornton because not only Stanley Lake, they get water out of the plat. Plat has a lot of upstream, so they have many more PFOAs. The good part is, is we have the Interceptor Dam on Woman Creek. That's the dam that held during the floods of 2013. But it just is a potential risk to our water supply. And the federal government needs to pay for it if we have to pull PFOAs out of Rocky Flats.
And I had put out an email that, because we always take those terms for two years, and even if they do it every year, that unless I heard differently, I was assuming the people in place are going to stay in place.
On Tuesday, a couple of us completed a municipal court tour in preparation of our discussion coming up. I believe it's next Monday. And it was very helpful to see and learn in person from our municipal judge and other staff members about the condition of our court. So that was helpful. And then just joining you, Mayor, and all of the fun activities through Westminster, through Historic Westminster's lighting of their tree in, on Friday. And then so much better weather on, on Saturday for Westy City Hall lighting. Lots of people. It was great to see so many people out and about, just getting back into regular Westy traditions. It was great. So those were all my, and then Thursday was the North Metro Arts Alliance. And just wanted to thank Councilor Seymour for attending that for me in my absence.
Yes, on many of those things, court tour was excellent. I greatly appreciated that background on, on the, I've been to the court several times, but never down below in the fun part. But or back at Sallyport, so I appreciate that. North Metro Arts Alliance, it was a short agenda. They just approved a couple of months worth of minutes. And then they're pending on the budget. Their treasurer was not able to get on at that time. So they've got money. Their big primary funding is SCFD. And they're, they've got that money, so then they're going to work backwards on the budget. But other than that, there was not anything, they're putting together that 2022 SCFD report. Then on Friday, I attended council liaison to the Colorado Municipal League's Policy Committee meeting. And thank you for policy and budget for the emails ahead of time on that. So those, those votes for the committee were pretty straight line, and they all followed our legislative policy work. So there wasn't anything, they do a good job. There wasn't anything that came up last minute that we had to worry about. So there was nothing out of the ordinary on that one. And then obviously, that's a pre-session one, and some of these are voting on some committee work and work groups that are putting together bills for this session. So in some cases, they just, it's, they know there's a group, they're participating in the group. There's no bill yet. So a lot of that was monitor, 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 you know? Or, or there was a couple that were, oh, we did take one of the longest votes ever because we went from support with amend to not support to not support unless amended. So that, so most of them were looking for either monitor or a couple of them that really stepped on local control. The group was, was very adamant, as usual, is that, you know, if it crosses the line into local control, then unless that's amended, then, then we're going to, we're going to not support that unless it is amended. So then we'll see the bills in January, and it might change all of that. So that was that for Friday. Yes, it was cold Friday night, better Saturday. So that's all for me.
Lots of events. But what I'd like to talk about is the municipal, so I was not at the tour, but I shadowed the judge a few months ago for a few hours. And he, he showed me the state of the courthouse. And yeah, that, there's definitely need there. So I'm looking forward to when we get to that. You know, it was very eye-opening.
Thanks. City managers.
All right, mayor, mayor pro tem, councilors, we'll get to the next slide. And so just wanted to provide a quick city update. So first of all, the police chief recruitment is on track. We finished up last week with our community survey. We had over 1,500 folks that completed the survey and provided input. And so that has been helpful in essentially building our profile that will go live hopefully tomorrow, maybe. So we're looking at tomorrow, that being posted. And then we'll start looking at applications after the New Year. So that move is moving along quite nicely. We've got staff that will be re-engaging interested community members in developing some regulatory and oversight framework for short-term rentals in Westminster. And we'll come back with that framework to the city council in spring of 2023. And then some, you know, questions about the Holmesclaw Homestead. That was raised during the month of November. We're working with the owner of the property, which is Berkeley Homes, to remove the remaining debris. Saw them out there this weekend, moving some trees and brush and things like that around, putting them into piles for easier removal. And so that's moving, but it is a slow work in progress. Next slide.
I do think we could have a good bonfire and have.
Yes, ma'am, yes, we could.
See that from Wyoming.
No, they have it in like six piles now.
Some Westy winds. So first of all, the visit with Santa at the Westview Recreation Center. Had about 400 community members that attended that second annual event. And families were able to get a photo with Santa. There is a North Pole mailbox was added this year, allowing children to send their letters to Santa. I've noticed that that has moved to out front here at City Hall. So encourage the community to come by and take advantage of that. Pretty cool. And then, as mentioned by the mayor, mayor pro tem and councilors already, two great Westy winds with the Hometown Christmas event in Historic Westminster on Friday night, nicely attended, great caroling. Kind of reminded me of, you know, kind of a small-town ambiance, very, very nice. And then the holiday lighting ceremony on Saturday night, extremely well-attended, very popular, lots of kids, lots of smiles. And so what a wonderful event. And so all three of those great Westy winds. Next slide. Some things to know. So Fire Department continues their holiday charity drive that goes through December 16. So folks have food, toys, clothes, and they want to drop those off. They can do so at any city facility, and there are several participating community locations. And these donations support Have a Heart Project, Jeffco Foster Care, Santa Cops, and Fish Food Bank of, Food Bank of Westminster. And so a great way to give back a little bit. Coming up on Wednesday this week, 7:00 to 8:30, Special Permits and License Board Committee meeting or Board meeting. That's right here in Council Chambers. Santa on the Plaza goes from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. This coming Saturday night and the following Saturday night, the 17th. Westminster Rotary is doing that. We thank them for assisting that, assisting with that. And then City Council meeting, and that's the one where we'll talk to the municipal court conversation. We'll get a presentation on that, the need for that, as several council members have mentioned. But that's next Monday night, starting right here at 6:30 in Council Chambers. Next slide. And as always, encourage folks to reach out and contact us. We are accessible, we're responsive, we are certainly transparent, we want to be accountable. Please call us with your concerns. Phone, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfritag@cityofwestminster.us. And I encourage you to connect with us. So you can do that on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and what's that called now? The neighborhood next door. There we go. That's the new one for me. So at any rate, those are the updates that I have. And then we'll move to the next is the information update. It's on the annual update of water supply plan impacts from the comprehensive plan amendments. It's provided information only. If there are any questions, we can certainly answer those. Otherwise, we can move on, Mayor.
Does anyone have any questions on the information about the annual update? Sarah, thanks for, it was good to look back and thanks for the good report. That brings us to presentation of specific plans for downtown.
And so mayor, mayor pro tem, councilors, we're going to provide you a quick presentation on the specific plans that go specifically towards the downtown and then also to Westminster Station. I did want to, and then how they relate to the comprehensive plan. I did want to share with, with everybody something that was a takeaway for me as we were doing the events on Saturday night here at City Hall. For anybody who was coming into City Hall, they were looking for how to get to, down to Santa. But for those that were willing to wait a little bit, they diverted over to the model of the downtown. And I saw a lot of folks talking, gathered around the model, watching the video, asking some questions. I fielded a few myself. And, you know, definitely folks were interested, and the big question was, when is this going to be done? And so I share that with you as we, as we go into this special plan discussion. Okay? So we've got John McConnell, John Burke, going to lead us in the presentation. So gentlemen.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, and council members. So staff's here tonight to present to you a study session on the specific plans districts per your instructions on the October 3rd study session.
Can I just ask, do you want to go through it first and then questions, or how do you want to go?
I, I think we could better answer your questions at the end, if that's okay. So I'm interim planning manager, John McConnell, and John Burke's here.
Economic advisory manager and manager. We're also supported by some of our team members here in the audience as well. So we'll answer any questions you guys had later on this evening.
And so with us tonight, some of the staff we have have worked in the, in both the specific plan districts. From the Planning Division, we have Stephanie Ashman, senior planner. Some of you remember Stephanie from other interactions. Stephanie has been the Planning Division's lead on development review in the station area. And she works directly with John and his team in economic development and implementing that plan through its regulations. Nathan Lawrence is a senior planner in our division. Nathan's on vacation, so he couldn't be with us. But Nathan provides the same role from the Planning Division with the downtown. So next slide, please. So the 2013 comp plan identified five focus areas to target public and private investment and support neighborhood stabilization for the majority of the city's land area. The focus areas comprise approximately 4% of the city's land area. And were planned in the 2013 plan to have the greatest potential for growth and change over the next 20 years. The 2013 plan call for the formation of specific plans for each focus area to provide more detailed direction for future development. Specific plans were adopted for the downtown Westminster on November 24th, 2014, and the Westminster Station area on May 8th, 2017. The work on additional specific plans is on hold, pending the outcome of the city council's consideration of the update to the comp plan and its effects on both land use and the overall vision for each of the focus area. The two specific plan areas are already accounted for in the water supply plan, developed in conjunction with the 2013 plan and do not create new demands on the water supply over and above that. So what do specific plans do? Specific plans provide more detail than the generalized nature of the comp plan. Specific plans function as master plan and regulating document, all in one. Specific plans combine regulatory zoning requirements, such as setbacks, parking, height, et cetera, with architecture and site design requirements in one document. This makes the process of development review and approval in SPDs transparent and predictable for the developer as well as for the community. So what's the relationship between the comp plan and the specific plans? While the, while the comp plan contains references to the specific plans and illustrates the boundaries of the specific plan areas, the comp plan does not prescribe in detail the allowed development within those specific areas. So just like standard zoning regulations, the city council adopts specific plans separately from the comp plan. And the specific plans provide greater control for the city council with regard to development outcomes, as well as predictability for property owners and developers. The adoption of the 2040 comp plan update does not impact the existing specifics plans the city council, and the city council retains all authority to adopt new specific plan districts and amend existing SPDs, specific plan districts, to implement new and changing policies outlined in the comp plan update. So it's important that we update the comp plan, and that would help inform what we do with the other focus areas, if we retain those focus areas, and if we adopt, adopt specific plans for those focus areas with your guidance and approval. With that, we'll turn the presentation over to John Burke, so he can talk about downtown Westminster.
Thank you, John. Next slide, please. As many of you know, the Westminster Mall was in decline, I think, what made the cover of Dead Mall Magazine. And so the city had to do something about that particular site. As you can see from some of the timelines, the master developer initiated going out of Europe in 2009, 2010, 11, 13, 14, 15, with the specific plan being adopted in, I'm sorry, the comp plan being adopted in 2013. What's also important to note, the city took this head-on with the acquisition of strategic parcels. So back in 2009, you may recall, the Trail Dust was one of the first acquisitions the city made in that area. Subsequently, in 2010, both Macy's and Mervyn's was acquired. Again, these were all strategic acquisitions in order to clear the site for these master developer conversations. Ultimately, the entire mall was purchased in. Ultimately, the entire mall was purchased in 2011. From that point in time, City Council visioning sessions were occurring from March of 2012. Multiple public engagement sessions, getting feedback from our residents and constituencies to identify what did our residents want to see in this particular site. Those open houses were held from March in 2012 through about April and May of 2012. And then ultimately, in 2013, a couple of communities, meetings were held to present the proposed framework for the site plan and the vision for downtown Westminster. This was ultimately adopted. Council authorized the contract with Tortigallas and partners to go out and actually create the downtown specific plan in 2013, which then was adopted in 2014. So next slide, please. With that framework in place, then was established the vision of what this vacant site left, as it was then demolished, and the infrastructure needs to support a vibrant downtown. So the city issued certificates of participation and started to build the roadway network with water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, regional detention, and parks and green spaces throughout the entire downtown network in order to attract block-by-block development from multiple different developers to create that vision of creating a new downtown or a city within a city, as we like to say, with a variety of uses. Next slide, please. And the culmination of those outreach to our residents really created this infographic of what the full build-out of downtown Westminster would look like. Somewhere around 2 to 3 million square feet of office is an essential play for the vibrancy and the economics of downtown. Somewhere around 4,500 residents, about 700,000 square feet of retail, which you may recall, the former mall carried about 1.2 million square feet of just retail and surface parking around it. We're also looking at 300-plus hotel rooms. We currently have 125 in the Origin Hotel. The Entertainment District was adopted this past May by this council for the downtown. We also have a requirement for lead certified buildings in downtown, which is a key element for that water conservation measures that we're starting to see the outcomes of. Additionally, all that location, as the Comp Plan in 2013 identified a focus area, this evidently was an area that needed that reinvestment to create that long-term vibrancy for a new downtown. The access to not only the RTD Station, US 36, US 36 itself, connectivity to Denver and Boulder, 88th, 92nd, and just that central hub for this dislocation. With that, next slide, please. I'm going to turn it to John to talk about the Westminster Station specific plan.
All right. Thank you, John. So the Westminster Station area SPD contains 135 acres. It's bounded on the west by 72nd, I'm sorry, on the north by 72nd Avenue, Federal Boulevard on the east, Little Dry Creek Park to the south, and Lowell Boulevard to the west. Next slide, please. The purpose of the station area SPD is to maximize support for commuter rail to downtown Denver, to Westminster, as envisioned with the approval of the RTD Fast Trax program in 2004. City Council approved a concept plan for the Westminster Station area in 2011 and conducted extensive public outreach between 2012 and 2017. The RTDB line opened in Westminster Station in 2016 and greatly exceeded ridership expectations until the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020. The city and its regional partners invested $80 million in improvements, including a public parking garage, regional water sewer and stormwater infrastructure, a world-class train station, and the most significant new public park in historic Westminster in decades, the Westminster Station Park and Nature Playground. All in all, the intent was to stimulate the local economy, revitalize the undeveloped areas in the station area, and increase connectivity between people and jobs in the region. The way the plan is set up and the areas is framed allows residents to live and work and play in the same area. It also has the effect of potentially reducing dependency on driving through intermodal transportation access. Next slide, please. The station area SPD provides a transition area to orient the most intense development around the Westminster Station Core and parking garage. And this is illustrated in this diagram in red, in the number two. This area transitions to lesser intensity and reduced heights around the edges. It's illustrated in the blue and the orange areas. This deliberate transition supports compatibility with surrounding existing built environment. Unlike the downtown SPD, where the city owns the vacant developable lots, in the station area, most of the property is privately owned, and the ownership is further fractured in the small lots with existing mostly industrial land uses. The city exercises flexibility with existing commercial and industrial uses in the area by allowing continued operations until such time that the property owner seeks reuse or redevelopment. Next slide, please. Like the downtown Westminster SPD, the station area SPD is a regulatory document containing zoning and design standards and ensure compliance with the vision of the plan. The station area SPD provides an overall cap on development. But instead of service commitments, the limit on, in the station area SPD is a maximum of 1,340 dwelling units. Like downtown Westminster, this area is ultimately limited by stormwater management and sewer capacity in the Little Dry Creek Basin. So further increases in density are not feasible over and above what the plan anticipates. Next slide, please. So this concludes the staff's presentation, and we thank you for your time and attention. As mentioned earlier, we have several staff members here that can answer your questions. So we would like to entertain those questions at this time.
Questions?
Thank you. On the downtown specific plan with the goal of being 4,500 residents, how many units is that?
So on that infographic, you could identify the number of units, which is right around 2,300 units. And that's a mixture of apartments, townhomes, condos. That's all categories of residential with the 2,300s.
And how many units, including the townhomes and the condominiums that are coming, are we at now?
We're at about 807 total apartments and other 34 townhomes. So I think we're just with what's currently on the books and what's open. And then we're just under 1,000 if you add what's in the pipeline.
Thank you.
Right. Is there a timeline on development? Do we have a timeline?
Sure. I will say that, answer that in two ways. One, when we first started the downtown Westminster project, we always identified somewhere in that 10 to 15 to 20-year timeline, that horizon. Knowing full well, certain parcels would be more difficult to develop. And certain parcels may, I would say, with JCPenney is one that we always knew would be a little bit difficult. We love JCPenney, they're fantastic. I hope that they stay in operation. Things will evolve over time. What we identified in the specific plan is to wrap that particular building with a couple smaller office-type projects. That only maintains viability should the JCPenney stay intact. Other sites, like the A3 parking lot, is an interim usage for now. You know, ultimately, that'll redevelop into something different. Can I answer your question?
No, it doesn't. On the really financial projection you gave us, you have certain years that we're going to get land sales. And of course, the whole financial projection is based on when those sales occur. So like, why do you think this year we're going to get $3 million worth of land sales and next year, $10 million worth of land sales? Why do you think that?
Sure. So I'm just going to come right out and apologize that some of the data that was in that spreadsheet that was shared was not current. It was based on earlier projections. So what we'd like to do as staff is refine those numbers, come back with more reality with what we know today, and then refine those looking forward as those numbers start to roll in through the end of the year. So I think we'd like to come back into this board, this council, obviously sometime in March, April, next year.
So obviously, at one time, we did have a timeline, and now we're going to revise that timeline and push it out?
As all development occurs, nothing is certain. It's loaded with risk. There was something with the COVID pandemic that obviously turned things a little bit sideways from a timeline perspective. Quite frankly, there was also some feedback that we were getting with the, not only the apartments, the number of apartments in the city of Westminster, but also how office was going to move forward as well. So I think we've taken a strategic pause, like John was saying, with the Comp Plan coming forward, really refine kind of where we want to go with that, with this council's input as we move forward.
And of course, we can change, the council can change, I mean, the specific plan anytime it wishes.
There are amendments that we can make at any time. In fact, the first one was adopted, I believe it was in 2014 with a quick amendment in 2015. And again, that was after providing, soliciting a number of feedback from our residents, not only in the city of Westminster, but living in downtown as well, to see not only the economics of what we are visioning as a city, but also the residents and how they're impacted with that, and the developers and development partners that we've executed development agreements on with the vision of that particular downtown. So it's not just staff, it's all of us collectively making the best decision for those amendments on that specific plan.
Oh, right. It's just that the timeline on the, on the new downtown is a time deadline because of the URA timeline that started in 2013. Where like the, or like the train station has no time clock like that.
Yeah, so absolutely. By 2038, if we don't achieve everything we wanted to, that's lost revenue to the city, period. And so we absolutely want to have full alignment with this council, with the development community to go build that downtown model as, City Manager Mark Freitag was mentioning just a few minutes ago.
How many, going to the train station, how many residential's are there right now? Because in your section one, I think it was called, you had the core that was two, and then three was to the west, and one now. And one is mostly apartments right now. So how many apartments, and don't we have a contract with someone? And then we have a proposal on that just annexed land, for what, 400 apartments there?
So yeah, sorry, Stephanie Ashman. Thank you. So right now, the majority multifamily owner in that area is Maker Housing. And their newest building has 70 residential units. I'm not sure exactly.
Well, that was, that was really Alto, right?
Yes. Yeah. It was formerly Adams County Housing, another maker, and they own and operate Alto. So lots of different names there. They also own a couple of the other apartment buildings within that area. I don't have those numbers on how many units are there total, but I could get that information for you and get back to you on that. As far as the other projects that we have under review, there's 3551 West 71st Avenue, which is a multifamily 75-unit apartment building. Then we have Lux Living, which is the two parcels that surround the RTD parking garage, the city-owned parking garage, which is 147 units total. And then the Sherman Associates that I brought before you a couple of months ago for the annexation, Comp Plan and zoning. We don't have a actual official development plan in for review with them right now. We've gone through a couple of pre-applications. We did go through a pretty long formal process with them, and then they pulled out. And now they've, they're doing some redesigning. Last thing they came to us with was about 270 units. So that's total, because I'm sure you want to know the total of what all those are together.
Right, you know, because in the presentation, you said there was a maximum of 1,350 total, right?
That's right, yeah. So we're at 417 units, 923 remaining to be built. Now, that projection.
Except there's a whole bunch of existing.
Yeah. The projection that's in the specific plan district is proposed new development. So some of the idea is with Maker Housing, that's existing property owners within that area, is to redevelop with them, so that they can provide a better quality type of affordable housing, just like they did with the Alto building that's there, the newer one. So that's, that's included in that.
So then, so then in the side, because I think the Sherman property was in the core area, wasn't it?
When it, yes, so.
And all the wraparound housing around the, around the parking garage is in the core area.
Correct.
And there's a whole bunch of existing as you go up to 72nd in the core area.
Yes.
So we really need the total of all the existing that's there now, because that'll tell us how many more there's room for, right?
Well, I know that within the plan, it's proposed new development. So when, when the plan was created and that number was given to us based on the projected numbers for the amount of water that could be provided for the units, that was the proposed new development. So I think the assumption is, is that it took into consideration what was existing of what we were providing, and then added the new units.
Jump in.
I was going to say that we did assume that there, that the existing residential would not be replaced, and so that it would remain. So that would be, it was about 1,600 units total.
Okay, so, so we really need exact numbers.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. And then that leaves in the number three unit, there's going to be no really residential at all there.
Why, what do you mean number three unit?
Block, we have a block.
Block area.
Want to go back to slides?
Go back to this block area.
Oh, for the transitional area?
Right.
It all depends on how it develops out. So, you know, depending on, you know, what projects come in, there's a vacant parcel in the transitional area right now. That's 3551, and that has 70, 75 units. So depending on how parcels get acquired, how land assemblies occur is, you know, and how the market drives those, is how those, how the area is going to develop out. So, you know, we have one in the transitional area right now. We have two in the station core, number two area. We don't have anything in one.
One is where all the existing apartments are.
Not all of them, but a lot of them.
One is where a lot of the commercial area, there's, there's commercial, a lot of commercial along 72nd and Federal in that area as well. There are some apartments in that area, though, too.
So are there going to be any residential's for one?
It's, it is, it could be part of the land use allowed, yes.
So, so is the 1,600 numbered, well, the limit?
The limit is the 1,340 new units.
And we're guessing there are 300 existing.
I'll get the numbers. I can definitely find that.
Yeah. One of the things I think that's noted is the sanitary sewer capacity limitations on the Little Dry Creek Interceptor. So one of the things, economic development, community development, works with Public Works, Sarah, to update that model to make sure that we're not exceeding capacity. So as new developments come in, we're always refining that model to make sure that that doesn't get exceeded, not only from a water usage, but also how that gets transported downstream.
I guess what I'm looking for is, is there a maximum number, and can you figure out what that is? Okay, because residential is the biggest user of water. Because it's sanitary water. And we have a finite supply of that. Okay, so my question is, is right now, the hottest property in the market is residential housing. So my question is, why would this other property develop? If it's, because I mean, we have in place there that none of the current property owners can make small increases to their use. That if they want to change their use or upgrade their use, they can't, right? That's, that's my understanding of what's in play. Is that incorrect?
So, and John can talk to this a little bit as well. So when the property was rezoned, it essentially changed the entire property to specific plan district. What was existing there prior was a lot of industrial uses. There was business, there was commercial, residential. It was a mattering of land uses and zoning within that area. So the specific plan district brought it all under one zoning document. So there's a lot of uses that are currently existing, businesses that are within that area that have existed since before the plan was adopted, and now since. before the plan was adopted and now since the plan has been adopted, that we can, would consider legal, not, legal non-conforming businesses. Meaning they can still operate under the new specific plan district zoning for as long as they want to, right? If they were to ever leave their business or like vacate that building, within a year, we have a provision. So that building can be vacant for up to a year and have a same use, let's say if it's a auto body shop, for example, that was there, that left, another auto body use can come into that exact same building and operate there, okay, because it's the same type of use and the one year didn't last. Another use can also come into there within that one year that's less intensive, what we would consider less intensive. So an example of that would be, let's say, from auto body to like a window tinting or maybe tires, tire sales, right, which is less intensive than full auto body. Now we're just doing tires or we're just tinting windows. So that's an example of how that use, that similar industrial, light industrial use can keep occurring at the same capacity or less intensive. Now, if you have it expire at a year, then it has to come into conformance with the plan and the list of adopted land uses that are within this plan. So another automobile shop could not go in at that same location. Does that make, is that clear?
Right, right. And that's my understanding. Like, like if that auto body shop wanted to, I mean, expand to include the property next to it, that would be allowed.
That's correct. And, and this isn't unique to the specific plan districts. This is a city code provision that applies citywide.
Oh, no. We just really did that with, really with, really with like the Episcopal Church. It was vacant for two years. We had to make a special exception to allow another community type organization to go in there, because otherwise it would revert to the R1. And going back to the new downtown, so we're at 1,000 units now, so we have 1,300 more to go. Do we have lots envisioned for them or they can be on any trace of lots there?
I would say the shorter answer is there's really only about maybe three different blocks that are going to support a multifamily building. We have a number of those blocks right now that are allocated towards more townhomes, more condos, and a lot of them for office. And we'll start to see the mixture of uses. So one of our consultants, David's partnerships, helps us to identify the massing studies for each of those lots and blocks so that we can achieve that yield in order to receive some of those, those revenues as projected.
Well, let me get, let me get really specific about how, about how many acres at the new downtown were actually developable and we could sell. Because I think it's 103 acres total, but so much went into the parks and the roads and blah, 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 that we only had like 60 acres to sell, right?
Yeah, it was actually, I think it might have been just a little bit less than that after we kind of allocated about 18 acres of area for parks. I think another say 20 acres for rights of way, and then portions of that, 105 acres, like Brunswick owns their land as well. So there is that number. I'm happy to, I got that exact number down because we got to report it every year.
So let's just say 55 is what we had to sell. And we've sold how much of it?
So we're about 31% of total land area that can be sold, has been sold.
So we've sold, so we've sold about 18 acres.
Yes.
Okay, so that means we have what, 37 acres left to sell?
About that.
Okay. So if we, and so far land sales have gotten us $11 million off those 18, right?
Yeah, sounds right.
Okay. So that means the remaining seven, 37 acres must be sold for significantly higher prices if we're going to net what, $31 million of land sales from them?
So yeah, as we develop, particularly those D blocks, the office ones are absolutely at a premium. And so again, those are projections based on that. Quite frankly, the land sales are such a small piece of the overall revenue picture. When you look at some of that spreadsheet we did provide showed 380 some million dollars of revenue to the city. A lot of that was out of the property tax, out of the general improvement district, retail sales tax, all those different tranches of revenue that come in. The land sales are really that first kind of revenue into the city and then it's gone, it never comes back. This is a 300-year development. Never again are we going to scrape 105 acres and be barren dirt. It is absolutely a revenue play, like CFO Larry Dorick can attest to. This is why we have invested in this, so we can get those long-term rewards and benefits to our community.
Well, well, I have a different opinion of revenue. For us, the city, the only revenue we get is out of retail sales. As we charge a sales tax. When it comes to property tax, once we lose the increment, we're at what, 3.65, like the lowest property tax in the entire metro area, maybe front range. So property tax isn't going to mean anything to us, relatively.
Relatively, correct. And that's why we also have the general improvement district, which will reap 100% benefit.
Well, that's why I'm concerned about the timing of when the office buildings are built. Because those, because those will provide the property tax increment. So that's why I'm concerned. We have what, 180 square feet of retail out of the 700 that we had envisioned.
That sounds about right.
So it's those other 500 odd thousand square feet, 500,000 square feet of retail that's going to give us. So that's why I'm so focused on when the office buildings are going to be built and when we're going to get the retail.
No, you're spot on. And the other piece for the retail, the other 500,000 that come in is so dependent upon the rooftops for the residential units. Because it all supports itself. And so we have retailers to say, where are the people? And so we get, you know, it's a mixture of all those uses, bringing in the house, the rooftops, the retailers, the office for the daytime traffic, the entertainment, those unique purposes. And that's why with that downtown, you see every use possible on that site, because that's where you want that energy around all those different uses, because they support each other.
And all the, all of the requirements like parking per unit and all that is all in the specific plan, right?
Yes, yeah, all that is identified.
That's all designated. And that was the whole point of it, is that there could be one document that like a potential buyer could look at rather than wading through our comprehensive plans and building codes and all that, all your own.
Comp plan, big picture, narrow down those focus areas down to a specific plan district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trying to figure out how many of these might have been answered just now versus what I had been written, writing down since you were talking. First, I'll start backwards with what I wrote down, because you had just mentioned about the rooftop supporting the retail. I want to push back on that a little just because of what we've heard from, I think it was the Lamy Company when they came. And they showed us a map that said where the, the demand for retail. And they showed the map for the demand for retail and where it came from. And remember right, that, that demand for retail where the mall once was still exists without the retail being there. So, and it didn't just come from rooftops. So I imagine that part of it, but it's not fully from the rooftops in the downtown that that demand is being planned to come from, correct?
Sounds agree. It takes both.
I have a couple of things written down here, and I think really what would be helpful to not have to hit all of them is I look at the slide that is, that I've seen a lot of different times that talks about how the 2,300 units, 4,500 residents, how much square office space that we want, will be very helpful is to know out of what, what you think we could do, what's actually built today, what's slated today, and then on retail, what's built versus what's filled. So that we know actual vacancy versus what the demand is, is really what I'm curious and what's left to build. I know, and this is kind of a crossover from the next presentation on the comp plan. One of the things that I would like us to have a serious discussion about is the, the amount of for rent apartments in the downtown. Just knowing even to what you had answered one of Council Baker's questions about how many units of residential are left. I think, you know, I want to make sure that there's the mix between what's for purchase and what's for rent apartment. And to really understand, are we going to go after any more affordable? And if so, how much? Where should it be? And how many units should it be? And what kind of affordable we really want to go after? I imagine that we probably want some sort of component of it, but it should be balanced, because one of the things that, when I look at this, hasn't really changed a couple of years ago when we decided, we heard from the community, community did not like us saying the next urban center. So we pulled that out. But what have we changed in terms of the actual plan to, to match what the community said? I think the community did, does understand that there's going to be an urban component to this, but I want to make sure that, that we're making some adjustments that we haven't done to date in my mind. Let me think what else I, I had on, on my head as we were going through this. Lead, is lead, and I may have had this in the questions I sent in for the, the comp plan, I think I did. But since it's on here, is that showing to be any kind of barrier when you're, when, when our people are out looking for people to develop in our downtown or RTOD, or in the city wide? I think it, because it was on my comp plan, but since it's here, I am curious with, with the downtown, has that concept been well accepted in the development community? Are we seeing that be a standard in the region, or is it a barrier?
No, it's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. So what we have seen is the lead silver requirement has not been a, a super high bar. It's not lead platinum, it's not lead gold, it's lead silver. Most of them, quite frankly, can be met by our 2015 adopted building codes, the suite of building codes. So it's not been significantly more for the developers. What we, they've seen though is the benefit for we have long-term operators and owners. And it's not just a single point in time investment, it's the triple bottom line of all of the investment. And so if they're paying less for energy, that's a net profit to their, you know, net on the other side, as well as water consumption, like some of our group 14 did an analysis of the Aspire that you saw, that they have utilized 43% less water than they anticipated. Because of some of the lead silver, not only the requirements, but implementation of those in those units. So we're seeing less water consumption, less energy consumption of those pieces. So the short answer is no, it hasn't been a barrier. We've also had two different developments that we put in there, if possible, achieve lead silver. One of those being Almo Drafthouse with a big box. There was just no way that they could achieve lead silver, but they did get lead certified, which is fantastic. Marsac Fine Food, we'll see. They're working right, really hard right now because it's adaptive reuse of existing building. We've kind of given, given them some language that says, look, we want you to achieve lead silver, but if it becomes financially a burden or too big of a lift, just we'll get you lead certified. And so we work with each developer on not only their internal desires, because we may have some that come and say, we'd love to go lead gold, lead platinum, because that's part of our corporate DNA, and that's perfectly fine as well.
That makes sense. I guess the other, the other side of that coin that I'm curious about, because you, and I mean, some of what you just answered around affordability would lend to it. And the other part of it for me is affordability of the people who are actually going to live there in the future. And so what are we? I mean, the things that you mentioned, I would think would make it more affordable because energy costs are lower, water use is less. But in terms of actual mortgage or rent, are we seeing that have an adverse reaction with this level of lead? Or does it look like it's not really affecting costs when it comes to the people who actually want to live under rooftops?
Yeah, we haven't seen that impact at all.
Okay, good. Last thing in this, I'm going to shift to the, to the TOD. One of the things that I heard, you know, early on, and I, I just never circled back to me and it stuck in my head was when we look at some of those other units that exist today, specifically the portable units that are already existing in the TOD area. There was a concern that I had heard early on when this, you were looking at a specific plan about those being redeveloped in a way that would push people out who call those places home. So do we know anymore, like as this has progressed, like what that looks like? Or if any of those current property owners that have affordable may potentially redevelop in a way that would potentially be adverse in making people have to transition out of those homes?
So early on, that was a conversation we had with Adams County Housing Authority, now Maker. One of the strategies was when they built the Alto building, they wanted to actually move some of the residents from some of the older stock into the newer building. And then systematically redevelop one by one so that we didn't get that displacement. That conversation was six years ago now, so I don't know if you guys have had any more recent conversations with?
I have, I've had a couple. So we've met with them a couple of times to discuss some redevelopment of their parcels, but this is where it ends up kind of falling, because you have to, whatever residents are living within the units that they want to take down, house them while redeveloping and then bringing them back in. So it, it tends to push things off because it, it gets difficult to find a place to place people while that's happening.
Well, hopefully we continue those conversations and they come up with a creative way, because, I mean, at the end of the day, some of that stuff down there is probably pretty old and there would be some benefit to it, as long as it's done in such a way where people are getting housing that they can afford and not being totally pushed out. So I'm glad to hear that at least there's conversation around it. Last, last part of the TOD I'm curious about is I have heard from some of the community down there, business community where they're trying to, and this was in some of my notes, but I think it's probably more appropriate for this, this portion. Where they might try to sublease out part of their building, and it's been something that they've not pushed back from the city as far as a use that we didn't think is compatible. My, and, you know, so that's one part of it. I'm hoping that we're not being so stringent that, you know, people are losing opportunity for businesses that could help them stay in business, especially as hard of a market as we're we've been in for the last two years, and it sounds like it's not going to get any better for at least the next 12 months. Hopefully not too much longer. But along those same lines, now that we're kind of down this road, is there any thought around maybe adjusting the TOD and allowing more of that light industrial to stay? Because it is still a transit area. You could potentially still have workers who maybe would benefit from certain kind of jobs that would come from downtown and be able to use that, that transit station. So are we, you know, thinking about those things? Or should we be thinking about those things that maybe, you know, there's ability to further that development in a, in a different way than we originally thought?
Yeah, so I guess I could answer it in, in two ways. So in the transitional area, we do accommodate for some what we would call the light, light industrial type of uses, like the, you know, small woodworking shops, small welding shops. We've looked at commissary kitchens, things that could be a little bit more on the lines of that more lighter industrial type of use that you could work into the transitional area. And so we have padded for that into the plan. When it comes to the existing land uses that are there, and I think I know specifically who you're speaking of. You know, I went and I toured his business. I toured the business that wanted to move into his business and I kind of made sure that it was a compatible match in alignment with the code. And so we were able to, you know, really work it out, which was great, because we still have two very creative businesses in that area, which I think is a win. And, you know, I think what we're trying to accomplish is we do have some padding, we are allowing for what the code allows us to do with saying, you can have your existing manufacturing business, can expand, but where we can accommodate for that flexibility, we will to kind of help these businesses stay. But with the investment that the city has made, in conjunction with the, you know, investment with IG, different IGAs and agreements with other surrounding municipalities and RTD, we do really want to see some transition that occurs there, because we want to reap the benefit of what rail can bring to our community. You know, it's, we are on an economic advantage in this area by having it this far in this region. So, you know, we do what we can to try and work with the businesses that are there, definitely. But we do want to see changeover, because that's, you know, what we're going for there. We have seen a really great increase in interesting businesses that have been coming in too. So there's been kind of this growth and photography studios and videography studios and art studios and, you know, the music. So it's, it's been very interesting to see who has been coming and opening up businesses in the area. And so I'm, I'm really interested in leaning into that as well.
That's, that's good. And I guess the spirit of all of it to me is really the idea of why the city went block to block even in the downtown is we don't want to get- even in the downtown is we don't want to get so stuck in here's what we think today needs to be there that we're not allowing the market to come in with innovative new things. Because, I mean, think about where we were prior to COVID. Life has changed a lot, things that people are spending their time on by looking at careers and, you know, just, I think a lot of it is probably realization how fragile life is in general. So I want to make sure that we're staying in that same spirit and it sounds like we are. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the presentation. It was good to get an update.
So I just wanted to mostly give some context around, just for everybody's benefit, around just change and redevelopment. You know, if you, we have areas in the region that have redeveloped over time that have been from this working district, kind of similar to the TOD, like Rhino, for example. It's taken 20, 25 years for that area to be what it is today. And so these, you know, when it's market driven, it does, it does take time. And I want just all of us to acknowledge that, you know, Rome is not built in a day. And it, it does take, when you're working towards a vision, you know, and when you're creating a place, it does, it's going to take natural progression and it's going to take some, some investment, like as it has for, for the downtown, for the station area with, with the RTD investment. We've seen the orchard change, you know, that built out as a million square foot retail centric area. And now you're, we're seeing it, you know, 20 years later, almost 15, 20 years later, starting to have more residential infilling within it. And that's primarily to help serve the retail. Retail right now, it, it does rely on, on heads, on, on households. And so that diversification is really important. We've seen projects like Arista around the Broomfield Bank One Center, or whatever it's called, First Bank Center. That's taken, you know, 10, 15 years to continue to build out. That is not built out, you know, like that. So, and we've seen projects that have been built by master developers, you know, go into bankruptcy. We saw, you know, Belmar in Lakewood go into bankruptcy with a developer there. We see projects like Belmar and Denver Union Station underwritten significantly to up to 50% to ensure that these projects get built out in public-private partnerships. So these are all, you know, everyone's taken different ways to get there, but these take, these take time, they take investment and they take purpose. So that's just one thing. And I, you know, when we think about the outcomes that we want to see for the comp plan and the city overall with our water consumption, you know, as we look at, are we, you know, what are we using? Are we being resilient? Are we using too much water? We should be looking holistically at the city, not just, you know, these specific areas. These plans have been done with, as, as Mr. Burke mentioned, significant research and analysis on sewer capacity, on water impacts and on their, their location in their, their access to transit, access to amenities and services and their ability to accommodate this amount of density. There are other areas in the city where sure, we can pull back and we should be looking at those areas because we don't have the planning in place, we don't have in some cases, the infrastructure in place or the access to amenities or transit. So, you know, I want us to think strategically and about the outcome we want overall and how to achieve that without detracting from the work that we've put in to getting to places that are successfully positioned to grow without impacting those significantly. So that's just a couple of things. One question, you know, to Mr. Baker, to Councilor Baker's point about retail revenues and their perception of those revenues within the downtown, any development area. What percentage now are we looking at with respect to just retail sales outside of retail? Like when we're talking about pulling sales revenues from online sales, is, is that really starting to move the needle?
Actually, switch that to Larry Dorr, because I know that like Amazon rebents are probably in the top 10.
Sure, it's a very dynamic environment, but if there are 2,300 units and all of those units are receiving deliveries from online retailers, the home becomes a retail quasi-retail site generating sales tax, right? Because wherever the goods are delivered is where the sales tax is due to the city. So we've had to rethink the, the retail footprint as you've described. You know, obviously Amazon is a top, and, and their competitors are top retail sales tax generators for our city. But so too are those residents, those, those residential units we once looked upon as a burden in municipal government, right? Requiring service, but not necessarily generating any income due to a low property tax rate. That's also changing and I think you find that a lot of that is offsetting, you know, in time. With perhaps actually the growth in residential being more favorable because folks are having food delivered, they're having furniture delivered, they're having all manner of clothing gifts, all kinds of things delivered. So I think both are a pretty dynamic environment. Mr. Burke?
Can you remind me, are we collecting sales tax revenue as part of the TIF in addition to the property tax?
Yeah, as far as retail sales tax revenue?
Are we capturing that within?
Yes, yeah, for that, for the downtown area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just another question that came to mind is we talked about how many acres are sold within the downtown? How many are under negotiation?
Currently have, let's say, three more acres in total that are under negotiation right now. A matter of timing.
Does that include the office? And then I had a question about the TOD real quick. So back in the day, it, the, the industrial slash service, the service uses there were really doing well. Like I feel like we had a 97% occupancy in the businesses. I'm just wondering how the, you know, how the, what's the vacancy rate currently, like do we know?
Sure, we know the vacancy rate. We, we know about businesses when the business licenses come in and then potential issues come up like the one Mr. DeBart described and we go and work with those businesses. But maybe, do you have a perception on what it is?
You know, I would say that most of the existing areas, manufacturing like K W or any of the existing auto or, those are still pretty much occupied from what I know from speaking with the owners. And so I haven't seen much of a decline and we haven't had to, let's say, deny many business licenses either because I think people are staying. So that's a perception, but we could look at the numbers.
Yeah, just to the point of just understanding, you know, are people investing in the area? Does it continue to do well? Hey, one last question. Are the new projects coming in going to be joining into the GID?
Yeah, for downtown, if they're required to.
No, for the TOD area.
So, and when they, anytime that they need to utilize on-street parking to offset their commercial demand that they can't accommodate for on-site, they have to enter into the GID. If they are not and they can accommodate it on the site, then they don't have to enter into the GID. And it's a, it's like a voluntary basis, right? They say, okay, we would like to use the infrastructure, so we would like to enter into the GID. The Sherman property is already in it. From what I know, there's a good majority of properties that are already in it. We're just not generating much because there's nothing left on it yet. Once things get.
Right, thank you.
Councilor Baker, before I go to you, we have some councilors that haven't spoken yet.
Good question to follow up on, Councilor Nammella's question on vacancy rate. Do we have vacancy rate for the existing residential in downtown?
Yeah, we do. In fact, I'm going to look to, I believe, do you know off the top of your head what the occupancy is on all the units in downtown?
Recent units, there were, when they were at 90%, or 95%, right around there.
Yeah. Can we get those, all of those vacancies?
Happy to, yes. Yeah, because all of them are sitting around 90, 95% either leased or occupied.
So getting back to Councilor Baker's question about the numbers. I'm just curious why numbers are presented, were old and not current. It does say April of 2022. I'm just curious though, how old is old?
Yeah, no, again, my apologies. I think we scrambled over the weekend to pull those numbers together and we didn't do a deep dive to kind of scrub out some of the things. So we're under contract, we assume, like there was a big land sale that was scheduled for this year for the office. And obviously that's taken a bit of a pause from contractually where they are. And so that number is now going to have to get pushed out to next year. So there are things like that that we just, you can blame me for not getting into those in more detail before we sent it out.
And that's, that's fair to an extent. How often do we update these numbers? Because I think it's fair to look at them often as we are tracking towards completion of the project.
So absolutely. Back when Councilor Nammella was with us and staff, we did this probably quarterly in the downtown. We had staff reductions that we just haven't kept it up to date. We're now building back up and we're going to be doing a deep dive. In fact, starting in January, I think we're meeting every other Tuesday because quite frankly, we were a bit embarrassed as to what was shared and we want to make sure we have those numbers right. And so when we come back to next spring, those will be spot on and we'll be able to have a much deeper dive into each one of those numbers.
I will say that I know sometimes in our departments, they do their own thing, can work in silos. Two weeks ago, we got a retail study, report. And I'm wondering how that plays, how that study plays into the downtown and the TOD? Because there are key points that in reading it that I had zoned in on. And one of them was being the rooftop discussion. And in it, it said, simply stated that adding rooftops may not always guarantee the added net retail space demand. And so kind of being counterproductive or counterintuitive of what you just mentioned as far as rooftops being part of the reason why we don't have retail. So it's kind of conflicting, reading a report and conflicting, do you see where I'm going?
Absolutely. Lindsay Kimball, Economic Director, if I could help just add some clarity to that. And I completely understand the question that you're asking. When we look at our retail throughout the city and, and yes, our downtown team and as director made sure we were linked with our business development team to ensure that their input and we're reading and analyzing as that report was being drafted, so we were in sync. I also reached out to our planning folks as well to make sure we were all in sync. So I just wanted to answer that off the bat. And also to say that each one of our sub-market areas in the city are also analyzed, as you saw in the report, on their own, because it is the nature of the location. You know, where you are, who you're drawing, is it mostly internal or what's the, what's the cashman area for that, for that site? And that's what the retailers look at. So in general terms, what our consultant found was that some of our areas were over-retailed and they needed what they were calling retail pruning, which many communities, most communities are engaged in right now with the rise of online sales and just change in consumer behaviors. As we spoke about, we're, we're also reaping the benefits of the online sales through every rooftop is now a point of sale and we're able to collect sales caps there. But what may have seemed, you know, contradictory in what they wrote is that we do need some, some more rooftops, but it depends on what, what area because of that local draw to the retail center. So there's some areas of our community which might have some older stock of retail offerings or just retail buildings that need some redevelopment or some facade improvements, et cetera. Or just maybe transition to something that's more viable now, maybe more service-based, personal services, experiential retail. You know, so that's, that's where our consultants were going there is that it just kind of depends on what sub-market of our city are you talking about? Because they're, they're all individual.
Okay, that makes sense with a little bit more detail and context, so I appreciate that.
Sure.
But I'm going to lean in again on the study because this now specifically relates to the downtown and the recommendation saying that the master plan is generally inward-focused and lacks the connection piece of the, of the surrounding built environment. And so that then, that then is concerning, kind of lending to what you just mentioned, that surrounding areas need a facade update potentially. And that concerns me that we're strictly focused on downtown and not how to organically bring it all together as holistically speaking, as part of the city. So I'm just, I would just want to understand how, you know, we get these reports, we get these studies, we get, we get these analytics, which they're incredibly helpful to understand. I think the part that lacks the understanding is then how staff then relates this as part of then the strategic plan, the, the 2040 comp plan, the TOD specific plans. Because I will say that this is one of the better studies that I've read because it was very straightforward. It seemed like it was a deep dive, very detailed into what we should, what they're recommending and what we should focus on. A lot of times that, sometimes reading it, it can miss the mark. But I think this one in particular was spot on, on the, the detail that they provide in the, in the recommendations. So I don't want this to get lost because I think there's really great pieces that could be involved with both the TOD and our downtown. My last question is then how, because we could have planning for years and days and months and decades, but it could never come to fruition in case in point, the E-line. How much are, because I've seen it in the TOD and the downtown and in our 2040 plan. How much are we relying on this to help with retail and housing? Because I would like to have a better understanding of how it does ultimately affect. Because if we never get it, we need to, we need to make a plan.
Yeah, so that's an excellent question. So I'll answer specifically for, for downtown. The, the thing that that E-line is going to most positively impact is your office development. Because our big play and sell in that office is that it's highly amenitized, easily accessible for millennials and Gen Z'ers who are coming on and working in bioscience and life sciences and high-tech that we're trying to recruit there. They want to be able to access through multimodal transportation. So right now we have a big sell in that we've got the pedestrian connection now with the Sheridan Underpass to the busiest RTD station, bus, bus station outside of Union Station. So that's a big sell, but that train station really would, the train connection, rail connection would really be a difference maker for the office component. So it's not so much a driver for retail. We've found that people don't generally jump in the light rail to do retail, but it's very much used to commute to their place of work, if that helps.
I understand that. I guess my question really is have we come up with literally Plan B? Is if we never get retail, or excuse me, rail, what does that look like for us? For, because that will change then, your office component as far as what we have planned or what we would want. Are we looking at a literally Plan B? If we have no rail, what's the option? What are we doing to supplement what we thought was going to happen? What, and pivot to what we need to do?
Sure, so I'll start and I'll turn it over to you, John Burke. And I would say that, so the vision of office, a much easier sell with the rail connection. I think specifically, you know, I was trying to respond for, for retail side. Probably don't have to modify our plan at all, what we were planning to do. I think the office, it just, it makes our job a little harder, honestly. Because that's a huge amenity and it was a differentiator for our site. However, you'll see in our next presentation that we're going to give on the comp plan and how it's informed by changes in office trends and business trends, that the supply is just limited right now. We are, the only thing restraining this market, constraining the governor on this market for bioscience is available space. So it's going to happen. I think that with rail, it's a class A plus plus site. Without, it's a class, it's still a class A. But we just, we lose that little extra piece of differentiation, which I do hold out hope that we, we can still get. But John, do you have any?
Hundred percent agree. So a lot of what we're talking to, not only developers, but also the tenants that would occupy those buildings. Number one that they're looking for is amenities. So having a nice restaurant they can take their clients to, having a park, having trails. Those are huge for the office employee, having events nearby. So on a Friday evening, they see tents popping up, like we want to be part of that, having easy access to those things. Mobility to rail specifically is probably third. The also piece of that is we have the US thirty-six station with the Flatiron Flyer that already provides direct access, fifteen minutes to downtown Denver Union Station. That means twenty-eight to twenty-five minutes to Denver to Boulder with a couple stops in between, so you get direct access. So already reaping the benefit through the tunnel that Mr. Plasse is nearing completion on. So it's one of the components, but it's not a game changer for us. There's enough amenities and attraction to the downtown. In a, in real estate, it's all about location, location, location. On the Denver Boulder market, that's Westminster, that's downtown Westminster. And so we'll play up all those pieces. If we get rail, that, that three mile extension to downtown, that's the icing on the cake. And like I said, that takes us to A plus plus. Short story, we'll see.
Thank you.
We lost Fortune five hundreds when I was here because we weren't getting the rail. So I know how critical it is. It's a crapshoot. Everything's just going to take time and there's no guarantees we can make. Counselor Baker, and just let me.
No, I withdrew.
He waved me off. But I just remind you, you get so excited, let people answer and then ask. So go ahead.
Well, this has to do with what Counselor, okay, Nermella brought up is context. Okay? And it's my view that the city getting into the development business was a huge error. A tremendous error. It was a business we never should have got into. It was a mistake. And I view it was driven by the staff with a genuine concern that this was a better way forward. And they didn't read any of the signals along the way that, no, this is a potential future. But that should be undertaken by private enterprise. If this project goes to weigh all the rainbows and unicorns and sunshine predicts, we'll still lose sixty million dollars. That's the best result we can come up with. Would any private organization do a project to lose sixty million dollars? Of course not. So why did we do it? Because we bought into this better future? No, this is not a better future. And it puts the city in competition with private people, like on the retail places. You have a report that says we're over retailed and yet we want to put in half a million more retail doors at the new downtown? Now, if I was a businessman, I think, oh, you know, the city's gonna, gonna shift people their way. They're gonna buy us. I don't want to be in that position, but we're there now. Okay? I want, right now, we don't have any development. Yeah, we're no longer the new urban center of the Colorado Front Range, but we don't have a Plan B. All we can do is hope that these things come to pass. That's why I asked about a timeline. Shouldn't there be some markers along the way that's saying this plan isn't working? And we need to seriously look at an alternative? So, yes, absolutely, that is the context. And that's, that's the inheritance that our council has. Are we just gonna whistle in the wind and hope things go their way? And then two years from now, the new council has all the timeline shift back? That'd be a pretty crummy inheritance to give to the next council. So, yeah, we need to think about a negative outcome to all of this. And to be told patience, 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 to me, that's not an answer. To me, that's a con.
So, you know, we have experts both on staff as well as consultants that are looking at this. They have experience in development, they have experience in the real estate industry and in planning. And so I would hope that we would rely on them versus, you know, a feeling of a council member. This takes time. When we were, as a city, back in two thousand and seven, looking at what do we do with this site? We had an RFP that went out, we had responses then. But with respect to the state of the site, where it did not, and you were involved in this timeframe. With the state of the site where there was no land assembly, there were leases and easements and. Different ownerships, yeah. So city went back and, okay, how do we best prepare this site for redevelopment? And that's when the city started to pull together, you know, starting in two thousand and nine and took several years to pull together a cohesive site for redevelopment. Then, as you, as Mr. Burke went through, we negotiated, and I was there for three of them, with multiple master developers. It was not free. It was sixty million dollars of art. Art, that's what they were asking for, to do one-story retail and some townhomes on the site. Real bummer. So when we chose to go in the direction where we had control over what the development would be, we did. And we've gotten some great development on the site, we've made good progress. And we're continuing to make progress. And, you know, with the office, for sure, that's something that, you know, as in negotiations with office, with employers and as Mr. Burke mentioned, you know, it is, we have a great location. And it is something where we have to just work hard to show them what all the benefits are at the site. And it, it is going to take time, but we were going to be in this, whether we liked it or not, for sixty million dollars. And the outcome, what was the outcome going to be? It was not going to be the same kind of revenues that we'll pull in even with the GID and continued retail sales. And this is something that goes beyond, you know, just this build out. So this is something that brings in money for our community in perpetuity. And we have, because of the block by block nature, have this ability to sell it to different owners. And so we're not reliant on one master developer and their finances or one bank and their finances. I'll tell you, we were negotiating with a developer that was since bought out. And now they're pulling out of multiple developments right now. So, um, we would have, we, we could have seriously had a master developer just walk away or, you know, put a halt to the efforts on the site. There's no perfect answer. And we, you know, that through the information, just with the retail sales, just letting the market sit there. Our mall was dying, it was a big suck on the area, all of the other development in the area suffered. So we had a hole in what our revenues were. And if we didn't change that, we would, it would look like Brook Hill times three. So it takes money to make money, it takes investment to create long-term investment. I don't see this as a con, I see this as intelligent, strategic and beneficial to the community. And maybe that's because I have some perspective, you may not. But we are all relying on expertise.
I find myself in between all the conversations, as I seem to often do. I think just some historical context that's important for the public, since we're having the conversation around it, is that from what I understand from folks that were here before, such as the mayor, the city was very forward-thinking in the fact that they had diversified our revenue streams with things like our Walmarts, realizing that the mall was, was going to end. And my understanding of the, when we purchased the property was if anything was, nothing was ever done on that site, the plan was to be able to replace that revenue. And, and that's my understanding of what we did as a city, which is, is smart. And everything we've done since then. And it's hard to throw stones at, if it was me, Dave Demont, you find yourself in these positions always thinking, you know, what I would do versus what I'm going to vote to do, sometimes different things. I'm, I'm not big on the, to Counselor Baker's point, I'm not big on government buying private property and getting in these markets. But I won't say what I would do because I have no idea, I wasn't there. I didn't, didn't see the things in front of me and it's hard to say what I would, would or wouldn't have done with, with my vote. I will say that I think that there's really fine points about the fact that we're doing block by block because you could, I, I don't see it as a, a zero-sum game if things don't happen because of the nature of how it's, we as a city have decided to develop it. Because we have lost some ones that are disappointing, but there's plenty of other ones that are being successful. Do I think it's a good point that it, I think everybody here would agree, the more timely this happens, the better so that we do get some of that revenue back out because of the TIF. But the other thing that I, I did see in the report or one of the emails or communications we got was that staff heard us about opening it up to other partners and, and looking for development. And I think that that's wise of us at this point. So that we do take advantage of the time we have left in the TIF and see if somebody else could help augment the successes that we've had to date and avoid some of the failures we've had. So I just wanted to put that out there because I think some of that context is important. And I do think all of us are, are thinking through this thoughtfully. And I think everybody's bringing some good perspective to the table. And hopefully, we continue to collaboratively use that as a group and figure out how we move it forward.
Just, and just to not downplay the, so public, for the public's sake, they've heard a lot of revenue talk here, right? On revenues, we shouldn't downplay the intangible value gain of this development. There's a lot there that can't be quantified, that would, that this project also brings. Joy, community, et cetera. There's a lot of needs that our community has that is not revenue-based. And I would just want everyone to know that that's also a part of this, that that's a huge value gain. And I fully support this project.
Thank you for your, your presentation. And I hope you've heard, I think you've heard some consensus around some of the issues, you know, what are the hot buttons? And maybe we just need to, in the next year or so, get together more often to have those chats. Make sure we, instead of, we're on top of something and we have to do something as we are going strategically, just bring us along with it so that there's no surprises. And, but I know when I was here before, they looked at it as a twenty to thirty-year longevity. It wasn't going to pop up anything the next day after we did what we did. And it could have stayed dormant for a while. And so, I mean, you're right, that when it was obvious there wasn't a developer that had the same vision as this city had. Nobody had done what this city had as a vision. And that was the problem with those, at least while I was here with the first two developers that came in. There's just no way we could say yes to them. So anyway, I hope this was helpful for you. I think there's more positives than negatives. I think you've heard some of the buttons that they just want to hear from you guys, what's happening? When the building goes on, what kind of building's going to go on? What we're doing with our, our business, especially with the, we know that, I mean, we can't guarantee a train station. And that's been since two thousand and four, when we passed that sucker. And I've often said, I won't even get my ashes over the rail because it'll never, may never happen. But anyway, thank you, thank you. And is there anything else that you need to add?
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Does anybody need a break before we go into the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay.
I've heard the craziest Ben story that you would enjoy, Greek mythology. Arachnid, have you heard that tale? So she was the greatest weaver in the-
That's all we're on?
Yes, we are.
Yes, okay. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilors, wanted to start out with just a few comments as we get rolling. I know this comprehensive plan update has a lot of history. For some of the veteran members of the council, this is meeting number 14. For some of the newer members of the council, this is meeting number five. And so a lot of time, energy and effort invested in this over, over the past several years. What I will tell you is that the last time you sat down with the staff before my arrival on October 3rd, what the staff was able to do was take what you all, what they heard you all say and put that into the draft comprehensive plan update. So this draft version that went out on November 14th and it was posted online on November 23rd. Certainly some members of the county, of the community have come, you know, provided comment and certainly reached out to you all. We've certainly gotten some feedback in the city. But there are really, you know, three options I think that are on the table. Number one is, is you don't have to do anything. So our current comprehensive plan is in place. It's been in place since 2013. Best practices are that comprehensive plan is updated every 10 years. And so that's why, what really drove this one. But, you know, we saw fit to make some adjustments and so we're kind of moving forward. But if you don't like where we're at, we can always keep what we currently have. Option number two is accept this draft plan as it's currently been written. And so, you know, that would certainly end the meetings or the repetitive meetings. Or option three is, is at the end of this evening, if you have other tweaks that you would like us to do to this comprehensive plan, we can certainly do that. Our method of how we're planning to do this tonight is, is, you know, first of all, we have a presentation. It's going to kind of run you through between October 3rd and this document, how we got here and what it includes based upon your feedback on October 3rd. We are then going to ask you for questions. And so if you have questions about, you know, why, we can certainly do that. But then the, really the purpose of the meeting, if you aren't satisfied with what you see here, we want to collect on the whiteboard what your recommended revisions are or changes. And so I'll work the whiteboard at the end of the table. And what we really need from the council then is, is if you have a recommendation or a change to what you currently have in front of you, we're going to put it on the whiteboard and then we're going to ask the council to say, I got, you know, four thumbs up or I don't have four thumbs up. And those things that we have four thumbs up on are the things that we're going to go, go home and work on or go back to work and work on. Because we really want to make sure that we capture council consensus. Because we don't want to, we want it to be absolutely crystal clear where we're heading out of tonight's meeting. The last thing that I would just mention is, is that I do think, you know, and this is not a, certainly not a requirement for the council, but something that the council ought to think about and that is, you know, if, if we come out of this meeting with recommended changes or things that you want us to go back and rework, we certainly are more than capable of doing that. But I would ask the council to agree that those are the things that we want to focus on moving forward. If we come back in several weeks or months from now and now we have a whole bunch of new issues, you know, then we continue to get caught into this do-loop of never-ending cycles where, you know, we're just never getting there. So I would just ask you to keep that in mind as far as, you know, what you have before you, you know, is it appropriate? If it's not, what are the things we need to fix? And then if those are the things that we need to fix, then let's agree that these are the things we're going to work on and get them right and then we're going to call a victory on the 2040 plan, okay? So that's what we've got going on tonight. And so I would turn it over to Dave Downing, our Community Development Director, who's got some, some additional folks, Andrew and Lindsay are going to help him in the presentation tonight. But Dave, why don't you start us out?
I will. Good evening, Dave Downing, Community Development Director here tonight for this presentation. Again with Lindsay Kimble, our Economic Development Director, and Andrew Spurgeon, Long Range Planner. We have supporting cast of characters and the bleachers that we will call up on if necessary. So for tonight's presentation, we're going to review an alternative proposal for the 2040 plan based on the comments received from you folks at the October 3rd study session, which was the last time we were before you with the draft comprehensive plan. We want to seek if council supports the alternative options that will be presented tonight and what your preference is for incorporating those into the plan. And then if council is ready to pursue formal action on the plan. Next slide. So staff heard what city council's concerns were at the October 3rd study session. This feedback is what staff followed to develop an alternative recommendation. We heard your interest in focusing on vacant lands, the need for capacity for employment development and to ensure the plan is responsive to changing industry trends and research and development, biotech and similar uses. We heard your desire for housing formats that can support home ownership while curtailing further apartment development. We heard your challenge to reduce anticipated citywide water demand. And we heard your interest in improving the document readability, removing relevant content and reducing the overall length of the plan. If council supports the options included in this presentation, you will have greatly curtailed the ability to develop, to develop new multifamily anywhere but for the two specific plan areas that we discussed earlier and sites that already have approved multifamily uses such as Uplands. So I'd like to ask now, just maybe with a thumbs up, council, is this a fair summary of what we heard on October 3rd? Two, I get three, I get four. Very good. Thank you for that. Now I'd like for Andrew to walk us through this presentation. And if you would, please hold your, hold your questions to the end. We'll try to go through the presentation quickly.
All right, next slide, please. As we talked about and when we were here before, we spent a lot of time talking mainly on land use, but also our remaining land inventory and how do we help support council's priorities with those few sites? As we've talked about before, about 4.7% of the city is, is all that's left of vacant developable land. But if you net out the sites that already have working development applications, it's about 2.6% of the city's land area. And that continues to shrink as new development applications come in. But we realize council wants to be very careful with the decisions you're making on those sites and we do appreciate that you all want to be good stewards of those precious few lands that are available. Based on what we heard at the October 3rd study session, the desire to identify employment lands, our Department of Community Development teamed up with the Economic Development Department. We met several times actually. We talked about emerging industry trends and locations that would be good candidates for those type of employment uses that Dave mentioned. Really thinking about how you get sort of groupings of these activities together in employment areas, where we have the infrastructure that could support those types of uses, both in terms of our transportation system, but also our utility system that may have capacity for those. But also being sensitive to our existing neighborhoods. We wouldn't want to bring in, you know, for example, a giant industrial complex in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So really thinking about the compatibility with other employment uses, this infrastructure and then looking at what's around it kind of frames the recommendations we'll be presenting to you. And I'm going to hand it over to Lindsay just for the next slide.
Okay, great. Thank you. Lindsay Kimble, Economic Development Director. As Andrew mentioned, our teams met several times and we brought to the table as the economic development team that perspective of, as I heard from this body on October 3rd, understanding how does what we're, what we're proposing in this comp plan mesh with trends that we're seeing currently is particularly in life sciences, biosciences, everything that is, absolutely the strongest growth that we're seeing in an industry is in the life sciences cluster. So that's spot on and we wanted to bring that to the table in our discussions. And I just wanted to point out, it was very timely as well because JLL annually does one of the most highly regarded life sciences research projects with KPM, KPMG, KPMG, sorry. And they work together and they do a cluster ranking and a really detailed excellent report on the life sciences forecast, particularly with a bent towards real estate and how different areas of the country and regions are positioned. So I would share with you that within the Denver metro area, that region, which is ranked number 15 life sciences cluster in the nation in the study, our north metro area and in particular honing in again on location, 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 the US 36 corridor is the best positioned to see the benefits if we can provide the physical space. So in that next quote there, the next bullet, the study found that our region were rich in talent ideas, but we lag in physical infrastructure and funding, indicating a market ripe for growth if given thoughtful development. And I would add development that can help launch, grow and sustain that cluster. So we've got the smarts, we've got the people, we've got the research going on primarily in the Boulder area, so more northwest of us. But we also have the great potential to capture that because of our location along the US 36 corridor and all of our wonderful educational institutions in this market. We are primed, the only, as I said earlier, the only thing holding us back is the available space. So that's what we brought to this conversation about the comp plan and understanding what type of spaces we would need to be able to capture this. And I'd also like to share for additional color, two weeks ago, I was at the Boulder Valley Real Estate Conference and there was a great session where many northwest metro Boulder area communities were talking about future developments on the horizon to support and capture these life sciences companies as they grow and they graduate up out of their research spaces. And so that was incredibly interesting and really validated some of the conversations that I've heard amongst this body and of course amongst our own staff internally about the really strong prospects for life sciences. So I just wanted to emphasize that. But again, going back to space available, what kind of space? Obviously the office market is not, you know, it's definitely in a low point right now across the country. That's not unique to this metro area or the city. But what is doing well and the only subsection of that market that is predicted to do well are high-quality, highly amenitized Class A office space with excellent locations and accessibility. So what that's being termed in the real estate market now is a flight to quality. So of, and these are just round numbers, but of the market- but of the market, of the buildings that have been built or space that has been absorbed in the office category, 56% of it approximately was in this Class A highly amenitized space. The rest of the space, so that was about, that is making up the vast majority, the percentage that that represents of all office space is only about 27%. So it's punching well above where it should be in terms of percentage of space that is being absorbed and being built. It's being driven exclusively by this Class A amenitized space. So I just want to emphasize that. Obviously directly connects to the downtown conversation that we just had and our potential there, but also throughout the entire city. So we need to look at things like in those boxes. You'll see flex industrial vacancy rates are the lowest in the metro area and the metro average there is 6.7%. And all indications show a strong future projected for those flex industrial spaces. So that we've worked with our partners in community development through this comp plan analysis of vacant land and where other potential might exist to understand how can we create more opportunities for jobs in this comp plan? How can we say that that's an important value to us as a community? And how do we operationalize that through preservation or maybe creation of additional flex industrial opportunities? And again, I'll just direct you to the other bullet there is professional services jobs, which is where bio-life sciences and many other well-paying, those are where the high-tech jobs are. Those grew by 8.2% for the region, or that's 24,200 jobs. That's 44% of all jobs created were created by this sector. So that's very significant in both real, so the 24,200 number and the percentage number, it far exceeded its nearest competitor for second place for biggest job growth. So again, just emphasizing that potential we have there for quality jobs. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Andrew.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next slide, please. So the discussions between our two departments were very fruitful, and we brought to you an alternative proposal as well as some other options that I'll cover in the PowerPoint tonight. There certainly are opportunities for council either to indicate support for the alternatives or perhaps to slice and dice these up into something that we think is supporting the vision for the city. Measured by land area is the result with the alternative is actually a significant increase in the employment areas and reductions in the mixed-use activity center, which is the highest water-using land use type. Both the prior and alternative versions actually did not introduce any new sites for multifamily development. However, we did go back and look at some of the other residential locations and where we can have housing formats that support homeownership, single-family, townhomes, shared homes, that sort of thing. It's a little tricky because the city can't regulate if housing is rented or owner-occupied, but we can plan for housing formats that would support ownership as opposed to more of a rental community situation. These interdepartmental discussions also gave us a chance to look back at some of our city-owned properties and what would be the appropriate thing to do with those. And this was actually something I didn't expect going into these conversations. We actually are proposing to change a few of those sites to our public quasi-public land use, which is kind of a holding category for public type of uses, whether it's municipal facilities or schools or those kind of things. The main reason for that is for transparency. If the city was to do something with some of the land it owns, there should be an opportunity to talk about that, decide what the use is, not like sneaking into the comp plan. So that was kind of the thinking there. One example is what we call colloquially called the Banana Property. It's up adjacent to Circle Point, west of the tracks, next to 36. It's like, there's so many competing ideas of what to do with it. If we leave it for public in the comp plan, that will allow a council, whether this council or a future council, to have more of a robust discussion on what would be the proper use there and not try to sneak it into the comp plan. Overall, if you look at the numbers here, the non-residential aspect increases from 64% to 77% on the vacant land. And then the residential and mixed uses decreases from 36% to 23%. And this in turn would support an anticipated reduction in water demand by 222 acre feet. And we did that purely through that interactive online water modeling tool that we provided to council back in June of this year. Next slide, please. This next, this next part, we weren't sure what to do with this, but we thought council needed to hear this. We thought we should build upon what we heard on October 3rd because there were several concerns that came up. And so the discussion on October 3rd was really on the vacant developable land. But we believed that some of the concerns we heard were actually impactful to locations where we would anticipate redevelopment or infill over time. And the mayor certainly has observed this at the promenade. And so we wanted to, I guess, get these on the radar of city councils so you all can tell us if this is something you want to include as we revise the plan. These locations that are commercial settings, but through the comp plan would, as it is now in 2013, would allow higher-density residential uses to be introduced into these commercial settings. So these are carryovers from the 2013 plan. The 2013 plan did anticipate that a number of our commercial areas are starting to lose their luster and starting to experience some challenges. So introducing more of a mixed-use environment, adding residential into commercial areas is one strategy to help revitalize these aging commercial areas. An illustrative map and list of these sites is provided in Attachment 7. Again, many of these are functioning retail centers. However, they could allow introduction of higher-density multifamily uses. And that may be in conflict with some of the concerns that we have heard from city council recently. Removing these mixed-use designations from the plan would not completely cut off redevelopment or infill potential, but it would allow council case by case to visit those, determine if the proposal is appropriate. And then you would obviously have the opportunity to re-review the water supply impact that would be calculated with any proposal that would come before you at a later time for redevelopment. Changing course on these mixed-use sites that we've identified in Attachment 7 actually would save even more water than what we talked about with the vacant land. This is potentially another 235 acre feet of reduced water demand. We were to include these, which would be 457 acre feet, combining the two categories together. We did identify two publicly owned sites. One of them owned by Colorado Department of Transportation and one owned by, actually to my surprise, the Highland Hills Parks and Recreation District that have mixed-use designations. They were not on the list if council wishes to include those two additional sites. The CDOT property is the Wagon Road Park and Ride at 120th and Huron. And then the one owned by the Highland Hills District is actually in the Country Club Plaza Commercial Center at 120th and Federal. Adding those would be an additional 50 acre feet of savings potentially there, which would be 507 if you're keeping track of how those numbers add up together. I will say that curtailing the ability of residential to infill some of these existing commercial areas is a fairly significant policy shift from past land planning of the city. And it would potentially remove a very large amount of future multifamily from buildout of the city. Next slide, please. Some of the more minor changes, again, based on some of the comments we heard at October 3rd. Document length, I heard that from this body, but I've heard that even from staff. So we did, we did cut it by more than half from 318 down to 154 pages. And the main way to do that was that the plan is organized with topic-based chapters. And so we moved the sort of background narrative into a separate existing conditions and challenges report. That is now Attachment 9. So we didn't lose the content. It's just not in this document, which is really the goals and policies or the teeth of the plan is now in the shorter document and the other is just more of a reference or background. This also gave us the opportunity to make sure there, any content that was irrelevant or distracting wasn't in the plan. I know some of you, and frankly myself, had some bad feelings about some of the data points that were in there that we didn't have confidence in, such as the Denver Regional Council of Government Population Forecast. So that came out. We don't need it. We don't believe that number was correct in the first place. Based on one of the comments at October 3rd, we did reorganize the focus and transition period discussion in Chapter 2, a little more succinct now to indicate the current condition and then what the future vision is for those locations. And then we did deliver hard copies to you a couple of weeks ago. It is very much a working draft. We're certainly aware there's some cross-references and some formatings and stuff that needs to be cleaned up. We just wanted to make sure you got a hard copy in your hands in advance of the meeting tonight. But based on the discussion tonight, we're happy to move forward with an updated draft. Next slide, please. So our friends in the Economic Development Department, in addition to helping us understand industry trends and some land that could also support tapping into the emergency, the emerging industry trends, they also have our housing policy staff in their department, and they have been tasked with completing the housing needs assessment. They are looking to the comprehensive plan to help inform what that housing needs assessment is going to do. So they are looking forward to where this plan ends up in its final form. Similarly, work on the Parks Recreation Libraries Plan is sort of on hold until we understand where the plan is. The amount of residential development, its location, and the type of development will inform the location of parks, recreation, library services, as well as things like trail connections that go into the PRL document. We can't make assumptions for public land dedication or park development fees if we don't know the amount of residential development that's expected. The separate development code project will implement the comprehensive plan with zoning and building-related standards. And so again, final action on the comprehensive plan is needed so we can understand where city council would like to go in terms of future growth and development of the city. And then to implement that, take the policy side of the comp plan and then have hard standards in the development code to implement that. For example, this interest in the employment lands for R and D, life science type of uses, that's something that's really not supported with our current family of design standards. So that's something we need to include. It is important to know that the development code is prospective. So it's forward-looking on that 2.5% of the city that's remaining. It's not a retroactive document, and it wouldn't apply to the two specific plans that were just presented. Last year, when city council acted not to approve the comp plan, we really slowed down any work on the code. We really needed to hear where this council wanted to be before we picked up on that effort. Again, the related concern with water conservation, those are really incorporated into the drought management plan and the water efficiency plan. And their rules are in Title 8, Chapter 7 of Municipal Code, which is a whole separate part of city code than what we're working on. Things like triggers for drought restrictions. That's the only thing that actually does go retroactive onto existing customers is the drought restrictions, should those ever be enacted. And it's really the 20 or more years of declining water use that you've seen in presentations from Public Works and Utilities. That comes from our indoor water habits. And those are really a function of our plumbing code, which is a whole other regulatory document. So I just wanted to clear that up if there was any confusion about how our codes and the plans work together. Again, as Mark alluded to, the desire tonight is to understand where city council would like to go with the plan and the feedback you'd like to offer on the alternatives, if you support those or a variation of those or any changes we can incorporate into a new draft. We will advise you that if you do choose to pursue the alternatives that are going to move to less intense land uses, lower water-using land uses, staff will try to meet with the landowners of all of those sites to let them know what's coming. Something we think is appropriate to do. It's good government for us to meet with them. To be honest with city council, some of those will be difficult conversations. And city council will likely hear from property owners that may not be happy if they're giving up something they think they have with the current comp plan. But if that's the direction council would like to go with these alternatives, we will facilitate those discussions. With the holidays coming, it's hard to say exactly how quickly those would occur, but we would, you know, get to work on them as soon as we could and try to make that happen. And then we would come back to city council at a later time, letting you know the result of those and see if we're ready for action on the point. And that concludes my presentation. I do have questions submitted by Councilor Damat, I'm sorry, beg my pardon, beg your pardon. Mayor Protem Damat, in advance of the meeting, we do have those. We do have some information on those. But if you want to go around or whatever the preference is.
He had his hand up first, so he might as well go with his questions.
Well, and I'm sure by now you've at least seen a lot of them are just updates and hearing you tonight, that may just be because you haven't got to that part, like the, some of the guiding principles. With old guiding principles, the new vision was in there, but not the new guiding principle. It looked like they didn't match up with our current strat plan, if I was looking at it. So I was trying to understand that, if those were based off of the current strat plan or were those based off of old strat plan, or are those your own guiding principles?
Yeah, and I, first of all, I see why there's confusion because I went back and looked at that and I was like, oh, yeah, that is confusing. Those are not the strategic plan guiding principles. The existing comprehensive plan, the 2013 plan, has nine guiding principles. Okay. We, through our public engagement, we looked at those and we tried to distill those down to the more salient points. And so we actually landed on the four guiding principles that are recommended here, thriving city, healthy places, great neighborhoods management. And so they're really not the same as the strategic plan guiding principles. But as I was reading that and I understood why that could create confusion. We could call them something like the four corner tones or something like that, maybe to remove confusion.
Yeah, and I, because for the most part, I don't have any big concerns except for when we start looking at things like there is throughout the plan, callouts of things like a prior goal of being the leader and national leader in affordable housing, for example. And I think that that can be counterintuitive with the cutting down on the multifamily. You know, so there's some of that. So some of that cleanup, I think, is probably there. A lot of my other questions are just, you can answer them. I don't think they're important for discussion. They're just more curiosities. I think that probably the biggest concern I had was that. The next one was, you know, understanding how the cross-cutting function, function, cross-cutting topics are functionally applied. Because to me, and I'll be honest, to me, it seems like a lot of fluff stuff that the city has put an emphasis behind that are important, but how do they actually fold into planning, such as inclusivity? I think inclusivity is important as a city, but how, like, how do you apply that when it comes to a building development? Is that really something that needs to be in the plan or is that just in there that everybody feels good about it? And maybe it still stays in there because everybody wants to make sure that the city understands that is a priority of ours. But much like the drought management plan, not everything needs to be in here that's a priority of the city, and to me, that just... to me, that just adds, I just don't understand how that's functionally a part of development, I guess.
That helps me understand your question, because when your question came in, that that helps. And I think we can relook at that. I, I think the main reason they're in the plan at all is that they were used with the sustainability plan. And so there was meant to be a way you could go between the two plans and see where there's commonality. So there's like common vocabulary that the plans were using. But that doesn't mean we have to do it.
Well, and I guess that makes sense if that's how how it's done. I guess it's just hard when I read it to apply it that way and understand that was the intent. It it made it feel like I was having to put every plan through one of those filters. And 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 it, you know, I think that if I'm reading it that way, I have to think that at least a section of the city is going to read it that way. So I guess that's, you know, maybe that's just a editorial piece of how you you present that in the plan. My my biggest thing that I think we do need to have a discussion around that is actually policy is around the water use. I I like what you guys have done, and I appreciate the hard work put into it as far as changing some of the the uses to meet what we've heard from, you know, a couple of election cycles is really where I I see it coming from. And obviously, not everybody in the city is going to always agree. That's the nature of humanity. But I do think that there is a a consistent when it comes to water and in building against water. And so to me, that that topic needs to be in the front of the door, because if you don't got the water, you're not going to build it, or you shouldn't build it. The other big point I wanted to bring up, and I don't know how this works functionally, is did not build water against projected savings and conservancy. And I understand we have trends there, but I would like, even if it's not year to year, but maybe a couple of years out, that we're recalibrating our development against what actual savings are. Because at some point, what if those drop off? Or the other half of it is, if the environment changes in a way that those no longer are helping us in a way that those projections, even if the projections are there, if the water supply drops, I just think that we need to think about actual savings that are there, you know, in a in a more relative time period. And so I wanted to at least bring that as a discussion point, because I think that's probably the only thing that really is really sticky for me still is making sure that we're building to water.
Yeah. Look, thanks for bringing that up. And I would like to address that because for a few months now, I have sensed that it's the conservation piece that is causing apprehension among a lot of people. And and I like what you said, Mayor Protem, about, in fact, you took the words right out of our mouth just a couple of hours ago. We were all talking about the need to provide at least annual updates to council on the status of the trending of water, the trending of water usage, and obviously, any changes in our supply. But something that you could use to gauge how the conservation trend that we've been talking about for quite some time, is it really happening? You know, I think I think there's some fear that the word conservation equates somehow to sacrifice. And that makes people feel uncomfortable, that I'm going to have to sacrifice something about my current lifestyle that I really like. But on October 3rd, you, Mayor Protem, talked about replacing a couple of fixtures in your house. And and you noticed quickly water savings because of that. That's not by accident. That's, you can only buy water efficient fixtures anymore. I bought a front loading washing machine. Uses a fraction of the water that the old top loaders did. My clothes still get clean. There's no sacrifice there. Councillor Nmera talked at least anecdotally about some people she was aware of who moved here from out of state, got here and realized, this is an arid climate. I'm not going to fight this, and decided to put in some kind of low water usage vegetation in their yards, even though we've told you that's only a small piece of what the conservation is all about. We we have tons of data, not just from Westminster, but from cities all across the country that are showing the same kind of trending in in conservation. And and again, getting back to your point, which I think is the most important thing, let's provide at least annual reports. This is why you have a professional staff, is to make sure we don't get in in a trouble so bad that we're beyond the point of no return. I think that's what we would like to propose, regardless of what kind of decision you might make tonight. Let's be aware that we are talking about a trend that is hard to define. I can't tell you exactly what kind of usage savings we're going to have in the next year, but let's track that and and make sure that we notice any variations in the trend that we think is going to happen.
And I think that's, that would be very helpful and and to tie it to the plan, just because that's what we're going to have to look at, because that's always a question, do we have enough water? Any development this council or prior three, and I'm sure before that. But the other, the piece of that I really want to tie into, Mr. Downey, is is a actual water supply, because then if the environment is changing from under us and we're conserving, absolutely, we want to make sure that we're mindful of that, because even the conservancy, then if, you know, if you have five years or six years of true climate changing, the fact of how much water we have, we want to be able to gauge that. And I've certainly heard that concern from the community that if we build too much, or we're not conserving enough, and and the environment changes, it's a real concern in the community. So I feel like if you you mix those all together in a meaningful way, where we're looking at them all, you know, parallel lines, I think that that will speak a lot to the concerns across a couple of different constituencies in the conversation.
Understood.
And we we had actually included in the plan, a biennial report. We could certainly go annual. But the idea was, there's 24 quantitative indicators in the plan, and so we would track those. And then we would proactively recommend changes to the plan, you know, you know, so we're not just waiting for privately initiated comprehensive plan amendments. We had proposed biennial, so we would have the benefit of the citizen survey results in our biennial budget process, but we could certainly do annual if that's what council.
Honestly, either one works for me, as long as it's codified that that's the plan. I think that when you're talking about environment or conservancy, either of them, you're probably not going to see as much year to year as you're probably going to see every other year anyway, but it's still more meaningful than every five years or every six years. And it's and it's intentional, I think, is the thing that's most important to me, is that we're intentionally saying water is that important, and that we're matching development against it in in all these different ways that we talk about so often.
Let me say one more, just one more thing, just to make it crystal clear here. I think, paraphrasing what Andrew just said, the decision that you make tonight or soon is not a decision that would be beyond the point of no return. We're never at that point. We could always revisit. We get new information that concerns us. We come back and revisit the plan.
Yep. Totally makes sense, I guess. And to me, though, it's still with that point, you don't want to get five years down the road and realize five years ago, we made a really big mistake.
That's for sure.
So there's, there's a farther climb off the ledge sometimes. So but but otherwise, I think all the rest of my questions, you probably could email back, because some of them aren't even necessarily relevant. They were just curiosities that were spurred off of all my last week's reading.
I appreciate that you you took a deep dive on it. Thank you.
Hey.
Fifty questions?
I'll try. I try not to make them 50 questions, and I may just send you really smaller later email. So, um, so I did, I liked how you truncated the document overall. I think one place is you're you're refining this a little bit. You could look at examples. Two come to mind that are kind of similarly structured is Fort Collins recent comp plan, as well as the Denver Blueprint. They are kind of just the meat. And so I think this is close to where we should be. So I like that. I won't get too detailed in this, but bear with me. I was, you know, like Mayor Protem said, I was kind of looking for water to be a little more upfront in the conversation. So because I'm proud of what we've accomplished as a community, the dialogue that we've had, the expertise that we've gained over the years, and I'd really love to see that highlighted here, that we're being, you know, we not, we may not be a frontrunner in affordable housing, but we can be a frontrunner in water and land use. And we have been. And so let's put some fancy stuff around that. Then I'm just going to go, I'm just going to go through this. Um, okay, so I'm not going to get too detailed into this. I would say on the, just a big picture piece on the the focus areas, the graphics are really hard to understand what we're trying to convey. I like, you know, somebody dropped a bunch of diagrammatic things on there. There's no, you know, the land use is hard visually. They're really small. And it's kind of like you look at it. And so if we're going to use a diagram, maybe less on it, less is more.
I feel better if you're saying that I felt that way. If you're saying that, then I'm okay.
Yeah.
If we blew them up to full page, as well as making them less busy, would that?
Yeah, like, think about what you really want to convey in those diagrams. What's important? Is it use? Is it placemaking? Is it scale? And try and, you know, if it's one or two thing, or is it connections? I mean, try and maybe narrow it down, because I'm not really seeing use in there. And it's a little confusing, because all the colors mixed with existing uses, and then you have other colors. So I would, that's just this level of one more pass at them. Um, there's one piece about the the North I-25 gateway, or whatever you call it, North I-25 area. Yeah, focus area. We're talking about this setback along Huron, and really, we already blew that away with the most recent multifamily that was just put right up against Huron. So to be thinking about why we're, why we would maintain it, when we actually just got, you know, didn't maintain it in the last development that just went in. Only thing I would say about, and again, the uses are confusing, because I read yellow as residential. Just for that, hey, if we can afford to get all of this as office and commercial development, great. Hopefully, that works. I just, I don't know. But some level of residential may be okay, but especially up in the Orchard Town Center area, and I'm going to come back to that in a second, because that was one of the big questions that you had about the commercial centers. Um, I'm trying to figure this out. So that's the focus areas. So we were talking about employment places, and you did mention wagon, the wagon road site. Maybe it doesn't happen in this plan horizon, but maybe it happens in another, but it is a great transit location. There are a ton of buses that are in and out of there. So at some point, intensifying the use on that site and could be something really good for that area, particularly because, you know, we're, the commercial is so-so along 120th. So it wouldn't necessarily blow opportunity away on wagon road. So that's one thought there. Um, I think it would be helpful, finally, in the Westmore area, to highlight where the the runway, the FAA runway zone is. Because when we're looking at this diagram, it's hard to tell, well, why is it all, why are we so constrained there? Why do we want to not have residential in particular? And so that would be helpful as a context piece. I know you moved all the context away, but you could maybe at least allude to that. Okay. Um, so the, I had a comment about the neighborhood unit. And I think the main thing here is just having some clear parameters for it. It's a little loose, and if we're using it as a criteria. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, councillor, can I interrupt for a second? Are are these comments written down? I see something writing in the margin of your pages as you flip the pages.
You have to turn in the book.
What I'm concerned about, and I don't mean to be stealing.
It's time. I know. I don't want to go to this either.
There is clarity, clarity on the comments and making sure that the rest of council agrees that these are changed. So far, I haven't heard anything that seems controversial to me. But I'm I'm searching for clarity here to make sure all of council understands what your comments are. And if everybody's, or or at least four of you give us the thumbs up on, yes, we we like all of those comments. I mean, we could, we we could certainly go back and listen to the tape and try to transcribe this and send the, send that to council, I suppose, later on. Help me out, Mark. Do you have a better way of doing, keeping track of this?
I can focus in on just the one, the alternatives that you portrayed.
Yes.
I can do that. I just did have comments on, you know, there there were.
You have good comments. Let's hear them, and then let's see where we're at.
Yeah, I'm 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 keeping my own running list here. And so there's one or two that I thought maybe would be worth ensuring council is supportive. And the others are perhaps more perfunctory. But so I'm I'm keeping a list.
Okay, very good.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to go fast, because I'm, I know.
Don't go fast. This is important. So take your time, and let's listen.
I did a similar thing, the list I sent. So hopefully, if there's other things in my list that you see that need, like, more discussion, that you really spring those up, so we do the same thing. But if you don't feel bad, I just got ahead of it, because I don't have a job right now. So.
I finished this at 7:00 PM last night, and then I had to decorate the tree, or the kids were going to kill me. So, okay. The, going into the land use classification, maybe this conversation for you all, and maybe, I don't know if you noticed it or not, but we have this allowance in residential low density, as well as residential medium density, that gives a little extra density. And so for residential low density, we we say it's typically up to three and a half DUs per acre, but they could be allowed up to five DUs per acre based on city council approval, if there were adjacent areas that were five units to the acre, like slightly denser, which is, I I'm generally okay with that. I, you know, and then we get into the residential median density, which is eight units to the acre, but goes up to 12 units to the acre. And I feel like we're giving away free density. And so I'm, you know, there's, there's context, you know, talking about, well, the surrounding context or what have you. But to me, if we're, if we're giving up free density, I call it that, you know, what are we getting in return? Are we getting a special project? Are they doing something that is benefiting the surrounding community, their neighbors? Because these were just locational reasons, like there's transit nearby, or there's, you know, next door, there's some eight DUs to the acre. you know, next door, there's some eight DUs to the acre, but I feel like, you know, are they providing workforce options? Are they, you know, for ownership? Are they doing something special?
Sure, I, you know, we didn't necessarily approach it as, you know, are they gonna be doing something special, although I hear where you're coming from, I've seen that in some other places I've worked. You know, I think we were coming at it from the, how do we provide options for homeownership and attainable housing discussion? The residential R-3.5, which is the predominant land use in Westminster, doesn't actually reflect how most of our R-3.5 neighborhoods have been built. Most of our R-3.5 neighborhoods are closer to five units per acre. Cedar Bridge, Cotton Creek, Countryside, Torrey Peaks, Sheridan Green, Stratford Lakes, Waverly Acres, West Cliff, Wood Creek, these are all closer to five units per acre. So if, if, if where we want to go with the plan is to allow creation of those traditionals, single-family neighborhoods, we thought it would be appropriate to provide that increase, subject to a council approval. It would require a council approval, it's not an automatic thing. So that's really where we were coming from. We, we removed, there used to be a separate R-5 category. We only have one of those in the entire city, Tuscany Trails. It seems silly to me, why do we have a land use category just for one place? So we could just take our, our existing one and, and provide that extra flexibility. So that was the reasoning on the residential low. The residential medium could be worth more of a pause, and see if that's the direction we want to go. We've heard from people that try to develop a townhome-type product, that about 12 units per acre is a sweet spot. Our eight unit per acre is a little low. And similar to the R-3.5, most of our, the older townhome communities, I'm thinking of the kind of things you see on 88th and 90th Avenue, just west of Lottsworth. For the, a long time, the city had a zoning standard that was 10 units per acre. So most of those were developed at what would be an R-10, even though it wasn't R-10. So again, we're looking at, how can we replicate the level of density that was historically built in our suburban area? So that was really the thinking. We didn't approach it from, should they provide something extra? But if that's something else we'd like to do, you know, that's a discussion we can have.
Do you guys want to talk about it, or should I?
Go ahead.
I, I like giving that flexibility, because then that keeps them from having to come before us for every little, okay, we're at three, you know, 3.8, 3.9, 4.0, and we don't have to slow that process down, so.
I agree. I guess the thing that maybe would have avoided the conversation is the context being in the document, so that, because if she doesn't understand it, I sure as hell am not gonna understand it. So, however you could encapsulate that, so that it's understood, but, I mean, but what you just explained makes a lot of sense, especially thinking through the ones that you pointed out in my head. I can, you know, I can visualize the way that those developments are, and you're right, but the flexibility is nice, so.
Right. Yeah, giving those neighborhoods, I mean, we've walked every one of them, so we get it, and I live in one of them, so does most everybody here, so no idea, it was supposed to be a 3.5, and it's a 5. But I know what we have.
Or something.
So it doesn't seem so horrible.
4.8 would.
I'd rather have that than being in the middle of a commercial zone, trying to live with kids in an apartment. So we're, we, I, do you agree with all that?
Um, yeah, I was just, you know, me, I'm the most annoying person, so, you know, I would just, I always try and find ways where we can get more out of development, and so that is, and just higher quality. So I feel like we gave a little bit of leverage away with it, I mean, maybe there could be a little something added in there to, you know...
Be more kind to yourself, too.
I think from a text, if I could, Mayor, I think from a textual standpoint, just providing some examples really helped to clarify that. I think that's really what the council is getting at, is that, you know, the range for the densities is, you know, is okay, because it gives options, but to give some contextual example to that would be helpful for the reader.
Yeah.
I think that's where we're at.
Yeah, that's interesting, you said that, you know, in some of the draft documents we used with the public, we did include examples, so it would be very easy just to drop those names back in.
Yep, sure.
Anyone else?
Yes. Yeah, isn't on the neighborhoods, they use the gross acres? So they added in all the roads and streets and parks and everything else, and isn't that why the 3.5 is more like 5?
What you said is correct, but I actually polled the old PDPs, going back into the 70s, when some of these neighborhoods had planned, I know they were at four or five units per gross acre then. So, so...
So how did that...
Well, that was, we didn't have a comp plan in place, and we...
I mean, our yard's probably big. We have one, one on the corner that can build another house in there.
I don't, I don't know the city's full zoning history. My, my observation, when I looked at these neighborhoods, is that a lot size of about 6,000 square feet appeared to be typical, and that's less than, when we started doing our more recent comp plans, the R-3.5 moved to a 7,000 square foot lot. But six in places like Countryside and Sheridan Green, six, six and change appeared to be the common format used in Westminster.
Well, then, do we want to change the standard?
I don't understand what you're asking.
So, so low, so low-density residential, instead of being, what, 2.5 to 3.5?
3.5 to 5 currently.
Well, it's 3.5 to 5, and...
Which works.
So what's the problem?
Well, if it was, if it was kept at 3.5 only, then we wouldn't be able to build future Countriesides or Sheridan Greens, but allowing them to go up to 5 allows us to better replicate that type of single family.
And that's what we have in the plan now.
That's what's in the proposed plan. That's not in the current plan.
Oh, it's not in the current, what's in the current plan?
You have to be 7,000 square foot, 3.5 units per acre.
Okay, so in other words, well, the current plan is 2.5 to 3.5. Gotcha. So this makes low-density a little bit more.
It, yes, to the extent that it would...
Because, because this plan has redefined quite a few categories from what was in the other plan.
Yes.
Because I have one water use sheet that became obsolete, because we made new terms in this one, which was somewhat frustrating. Okay, I have some specific questions.
Wait, wait, sir's not done, we're just talking about this one piece. So are you okay with what's being proposed, 3.5 to 5?
Yeah.
An 8 to 12.
Miss Emmens?
The medium density.
That's the low density, 3.5 to 5.
Right.
Low, and then 8 as well, this is the medium.
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask a quick question? To the idea of this range, and Councilor Nermella, your original suggestion about the higher end of the range perhaps being tied to certain conditions, wouldn't the range be a city council decision? So if there was an application coming forward, and it was within, you know, between 3 and 5, it would be up to city council whether that landed at the higher end of the range or not? And that would be dependent on the individual application, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's just that the 8 to 12 was just a little more specific as to what those conditions might be, because they're actually kind of spelled out, and so one of them didn't say. I don't know, doing workforce housing, or doing, you know, some improvement to the surrounding neighborhood, or I, whatever, that's not in here.
I took the 8 to 12 being more like the townhomes, like you were saying, and that kind of thing, and at our meeting in Jeffco last week, they, they weren't talking multi-story, they were talking more doing it more attached, like 12 homes, or duplexes by 6, or whatever. But anyway, so are you okay with the 8 to 12?
I am, I was just, you know...
Do I hear any nays on the 8 to 12? And do I hear any nays for the 3 to 5? You've got to go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't think it was bad, I was just, you know, I get something. Okay, the next question I had was about the, for suburban multifamily and urban multifamily, it's just the minimum lot size. I was thinking in, for the suburban multifamily, because it includes townhome scale development, we have a minimum two and a half gross acres for multifamily, and I just thought, I don't know, there might be some smaller info. We have a lot of these weird sites in the city that probably aren't two and a half, but we, you know, that might want to go up above 12, because, you know, and go in between that 12 and 18.
Yeah, I appreciate that, what I anticipated is coming up at some point. The, the reason that went in was actually directly as a result of some citizen comments we got at a meeting we had in historic Westminster. There was, I think it meant, I think it was actually the late Beth Capra, who pulled me aside and told me observations she had made about things she was seeing in Denver that she was scared was going to creep northward into historic Westminster, the slot home type of development. And so we put this in there, the minimum size for multifamily uses, looking at sites we have in Westminster, what we thought was like the minimum size to make something work and meet our general requirements. The definition of the class rating, Appendix D, defines multifamily as five or more units on a lot. So this wouldn't apply to townhomes or single-family paired kind of homes. It would apply to those multiple units on a single lot apartment-type buildings. And so that's a nuance there.
Land map. Okay. I did think five acres minimum for urban multifamily was big, because if you look at even the downtown site, or some of our blocks in Westminster Station, now granted, those are already zoned, but those are definitely smaller, those are like three-acre sites. So I was just curious why we picked five for that.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think once we leave the focus areas, then, you know, we get into a lot more concern for compatibility with, with the built environment around it. We, we as staff really struggled with the St. Mark Village, which was an R-36, that was actually six acres, and to me, parking in stormwater and landscaping, it was very squeezed. They came to council, I believe, with a dozen or more exceptions. So we really were thinking, you know, outside of the focus areas in our more suburban parts of the city, that five acres, or even six, is even, is a challenge, so we wouldn't want to go smaller.
St. Mark's has, they have to have signs at Wishbone, so that Wishbone people have a place to park, and if you're down there, both sides of Wishbone, then, on the side street, people have to walk into St. Mark's, because there is not enough. That was, that was in this one.
Yeah, downtown, fortunately, this is, you know, there's structured parking, and those investments made outside of there, we have people that do surface parking, which of course needs land, and that's where things really start getting squeezed.
Um, I'm just gonna hit the land use map in relation to the questions that you had. So, okay, so for the alternatives that you suggested, the location of, you went from commercial to service commercial over at Huron and 136, wasn't so thrilled with that. I'm trying to understand if it's a portion of the site or the whole site, but it's also the portion where you have the S mapped, the service portion mapped, is actually adjacent to a school, and in our land use description, you specifically say that, you know, location of service commercial use was adjacent to schools and other sensitive uses and public plaza public is not encouraged, but we're mapping that, and at the same time, we're also mapping another service commercial use next to the new arts school over off of Church Ranch, and so, I don't like that.
We've got a spirited debate of staff about these. So I'll start with the, the one near 136 and Huron. I call it the U-Haul property, because that's who owns it, but...
I had to look that up.
Yeah. I'm going U-Haul.
I think if you go to the assessor, it says, you know, it says like XYZ LLC out of Phoenix, but if you look at the address, you match it up, then it's, it's U-Haul.
Interesting.
They bought it at auction, from what I understand, when they learned that doing their typical U-Haul use wouldn't work, they've been trying to unload the property ever since then.
Wouldn't that be a service commercial use?
For the entire 10 acres, however much. So we were proposing, or, I'm sorry, it's more like 22 acres. We were proposing to lock off roughly the southern eight and a half for a service commercial use, keeping the, the non-service commercial along Huron. We have the sales tax sharing agreement with Thornton, we need to make sure sales tax generation occurs in that area, but giving them kind of a break on that back part of the property. To the south is the Big Dry Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, okay.
Right, so that's not the school.
That's right. Yeah, I was thinking the mountain.
So we actually thought that was an okay use next to there, but...
Yeah, I take that back, yes. Agreed. This was, you know, kids hovering over me, telling me to decorate.
No, I understand, that's, that's, the other one, though, is, you know, we've kind of struggled with, you know, Church Ranch is a focus area, but it sort of has different personalities depending on where you are in that area. There was combined about 11 and a half acres that would lend itself to employment development, but the Doral Academy is pursuing charter school, as you know, is on 7.2 acres. That really, we believe is going to take some of the momentum out of further employment area, right, right around that area. You know, you don't really have, for that four acres that's remaining, it's like, what do you do with the four acres that's left if the school's taking the big chunk of it? It doesn't have highway visibility, and there's not, there's not really good synergy with the other things around it. So we were recommending the service commercial use. It's away from the single-family neighborhoods, it's on Church Ranch Boulevard at a stoplight intersection, so we just, we thought that could be a good candidate for service commercial use, which also is very low water, one of our lowest water-using land uses.
And that, that's on the corner off of Doral Academy, then, where that light is?
Yeah, southeast corner of Church Ranch and West Cliff Park.
Still not in love with that. Having it right next to a school, I've got to just see commercial there. There is some flexibility with, instead of just going straight to service commercial, I mean, commercial does have a little bit of flexibility with it, where you could play with it, versus just kind of saying, here, come put a, whatever, auto use right in front of it.
Our, our group discussion landed on the service commercial, but, you know, if Council as a group wants to do something different, we, we just thought, we, you know, the Walnut Creek is very well-retailed, but there's not a lot of opportunities for those auto uses to locate in the area.
And the school chose to put themselves a half block off of a high-volume street.
I'll talk to Doral about it. If you guys are okay, I just, I don't like it.
Doral should go to one of the closing Jeffco school sites.
Have they known? Had they known? Okay, um, so.
We need to check if other people have concerns over that site.
I guess I'm the only, okay, you know how I am, a height of a very high standard. Yes, it did. I didn't change my mind. I just kind of gave up.
We might as well, just check it out.
Well, do you, do you want it or no?
I don't want service commercial right next to a school.
So should we then just do the poll or?
That's what I just did.
What the hell?
And nobody had other concerns. So she's the only one.
The only one. Doral, you heard me. Um, okay, so, uh, let's see, so big picture with the retail, that some of the mixed use commercial sites going to just commercial. Um, I do have a concern about, well, then what? You know, we're talking about the retail strategy, um, you know, having to prune retail and then instead of allowing for a little more flexibility on some of our, um, older, less exciting, um, less active, uh, retail centers that we're kind of pulling back on that. And, um, I would say probably there's a balance that can be found where, you know, for instance, you know, the ones that have been actively moving toward intensifying, working on rebuilding. Like I look at Orchard Town Center and that I feel like is in a, is going in a good direction. I wouldn't want to just quash, um, what's happening there, particularly because we're trying to attract office and employment. So to be thinking about the bigger context and picture about where we pull the opportunity away from and where we maintain it. And so that's a place where I probably wouldn't. Um, there might be other areas where we're like, okay, we'll accept that this is going to stay stagnant for a while longer. And that's just. Yeah.
Yeah. Orchard Town Center is a little bit challenging, um, because it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a such a nice environment to, to go spend some time in. Uh, the North Huron Interceptor, uh, does not have capacity for more high density residential uses in that area. But, and that's the new interceptor, the, the YRA is funding. So we actually kind of thought that was low hanging fruit to take away the mixed use there because they're, they're just not a way to sewer more multifamily.
Okay. Is there any, you know, townhome or anything in there?
Um, you know, we, the sewer bottling is done, you know, as a whole base and assumptions about how it'll develop. But basically whether at Orchard Town Center or one of the other properties in there, one very sewer intensive use basically would limit the other properties to develop. Uh, and so there's kind of a fairness thing. So if we keep everybody kind of at a lower, lower water, you, lower indoor water use sort of equates to a lower sewer use. Uh, that was the thinking up there.
Okay, I, you know, it's just, perhaps what I would like to hear from staff before we say, oh yeah, cut it all, make all these changes, is just an evaluation of, is there a place where, you know, the, the, the mixed use is actually going to help the area versus hurt it overall? Like i- i- if we don't have a lot of options for what we're going to do with the commercial center. Um, you know, I, I do worry about some of them going pretty stagnant. Um, and so I don't want to, again, kill off opportunity where, you know, if we could survive with letting that one continue, like one or two of them continue. Um, I'd like us to think critically about it before just saying carte blanche, let's just take it all. Um, and that's for the retail.
Yeah, I, I guess we, we, we would need help from council identifying which of those were desired to be kept for mixed use versus which ones not. Um, I, you know, out of fairness, we were kind of putting them all out there.
Yeah.
Um, but if there's, if council has priorities, we could talk about that. Um, I guess my thought was if we lower them all and then there is a future time for redevelopment, they could come back and ask for a land use change at that time. We could reevaluate water or sewer or traffic or whatever the other impacts are and, and let council, um, decide at that time if, if that was in alignment with the vision.
What they're trying to work with, I think that's what you're proposing is the fairest, so everybody can get something.
Okay, I know the next thing is to talk to property owners who may not.
Yeah.
Appreciate.
Yeah, there's going to be some difficult conversations.
Well, if I may, those are conversations they then bring to planning commission and then they come to us too. And at that time, we can evaluate that in the balance where we're at at that time.
Yeah, I would, you know, just look at which ones have the best opportunity to drive other retail, commercial activity in our city. Um, and which ones are, you know, really suffering right now. And we have all heard from community members of, um, about their concerns about some of our failing retail centers. And so are we hearing them, reflecting them if we're kind of just saying, okay, well, we hear you, but, you know, it's going to stay where it is. So I would just like to have a little more. Yeah. Backing behind some of those. I mean, if, if there are any that are really high vacancy, that might be helpful to know versus others. Um, you know, are there sicker locations than others that we need to attend to?
I think we're going to get a lot of that out of the public, out of the public comments in the meetings that, you know, we've got going on. So you're going to hear some of those, uh, opportunities rise, you know, to the top. And I think then that's, those are those adjustments that you make. Just, you know, it's, it's start on an even level and see what rises to the top or, you know, spend a whole lot of time trying to figure out what's, what people are going to support and what people aren't going to support. And I'm not so sure we have that knowledge right now. I think that's really where the public input lies in.
I, I would mention there's two sites that we didn't include because of some vested property rights they have.
Yeah.
And while we're on the North Huron and, and the Orchard, when does our agreement with Thornton run out with shared taxes?
26, 27. I know the YRA is 28, but I don't know about the sales tax.
It's all between 26 and 28.
I just think it's coming close.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Just, I'm sorry, I just didn't know. I couldn't remember the tape that it was. Not a biggie. Okay, anything else ma'am?
Of course. Um, the employment lands that were expanding, um, you know, I, I, Director Campbell, you gave a, um, a, a good intro of what, you know, the thinking was behind identifying some of those sites. Um, they've, you know, they certainly sat there for a really long time and, you know, just, I'm dubious about some of the potential on them. Um, so there's, there's that, and that was one of my questions for you all. And you kind of answered it in some ways of talking about the potential for employment, but I'm also skeptical. Um, and then I think what I also was skeptical over was the, um, the public quasi-public designations for the uses that are, um, the banana parcel. You'd think after all these years, we'd come up with a better name for it, but.
It, it stuck.
Bad bananas are thick.
It is the shape of it.
What are you going to do? Um.
And has, does RTD not need it? It was originally because of Northwest Rail. Because Boulder didn't want it. We said we would give that to them for the rail facility. Are we positive? We do not need that in case we get rail.
We are not positive for that. At least not until 2046.
Well, I'm just saying.
Right, so that was, that's what the public quasi-public designation would do. It would keep it into a public use, whether it was a city, RTD, CDOI, some future rail authority that hasn't been created yet.
I mean, if, if to get the rail and Boulder just fought it and we had to have a maintenance. And so we talked and that council said we can designate that area.
Right, um, so that would, that was our recommendation was the public quasi-public for the, uh, new 19.8 acres. Uh, with any land use, um, there's currently no sewer connection there. So it's very hard to develop for much of anything. And the shape of the parcel doesn't lend itself to meeting fire code requirements for multiple points of, uh, egress. So it's, it's a really tricky property and we just thought if it was public quasi-public, then that means, you know, it's a municipal use. And then when the time comes, we can decide, does it go to RTD or does it become something?
All the apartments that are over there, they need a big dog mark. And it could be used as that for the, for the meantime.
True. I, it wasn't as, the other one that I thought we were proposing, but I can't see it on the map is the one next to the Westin?
The city owned property south of the Westin?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was another one we kind of struggled with as staff and we landed on a public quasi-public use for that.
That one was the more puzzling one for me because I know we've been trying to sell it and that really doesn't quite sell it.
Yeah, so if I could, um, some of our, our conversation was around, the last time this had come up, I know this council had wanted to discuss future visioning for that site. So we also saw that as a more flexible placeholder for it for now. Or it could lend itself to more of a cultural use that would be compatible to city park, just adjacent and some of the other uses around there. Additionally, looking at what's the future for the Butterfly Pavilion property? And I, I, I just heard at that last conversation, maybe there was some visioning around a cultural quasi-public use for that site. So that was our.
Well, I would love to see it be a cultural use. Okay, um. Let me just see if I had anything else that's substantial. Can I give you my other random moments? Like things like, I can't read this.
Give me my readers.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't even read it. Um, just make sure.
Literally, this, I mean, is that even, I said, is this 508 complaint?
I said it too, so.
508 complaint. Typical to read, and I don't even have old eyes.
Guys.
Hey, hey, hey.
You did this two months.
Right. The older eyes.
I'm sorry, this has been the same since we got it the last time, as far as difficulty to read.
I'm sorry, is the font size or is the color?
I'm sorry, gray on white is awful. Awful.
It's the, it's, okay, so sick, whatever. Just so you know, serif fonts are easier to read.
I read that in a dark garage and I have old eyes, so I don't know.
What do you mean, glow or something?
That's easy clicks. That's, that's easy clicks.
Yeah, I mean, like this, the pretty blue and that thing.
Okay, it's really the, it's, it's a little close together. It's the, the lighting, both horizontal and vertical, if you really must know. I was going to make that a comment in my email, but since Councilor Emmons brought that up.
I think it was a choice.
No, Montserrat should only be used for.
You can work that, those are easy cases.
Um, so one thing I, in the economic, um, development piece, I didn't see anything about, um, we talk about supporting, enhancing retail centers, but nothing about just working with them to, um, refurbish or, um, you know, do improvements. Um, so just working proactively to do that. So I didn't see a policy around that.
So, um, Councilor Mill, I, I would say, um, promote redevelopment of those targeted areas. And so we were trying to come at it more from a redevelopment and the redevelopment toolkit that we're going to be bringing forward in the next year.
We just quashed redevelopment for many of these. I mean, unless you're trying to just say we're commercial, retail, redevelopment. Like for like.
Well, particularly in the TOD area, it's where we were focused on.
We have, we have policy 4.1, but I think if I'm hearing you, that could be a little more broadly, to talk about, you know, revitalization and refurbishing.
Yeah, because this is the infill and redevelopment. And I thought with what we just did, um, in the proposed version, we're not really allowing for 4.1 to occur as much. Um.
Not with residential.
Yeah. And then the other thing was, uh, for the fiscal piece, there wasn't much about, one, I thought we already had a fiscal model created, but this says we should develop a model. I thought Disherby created a model for us.
They, they modeled the citywide comprehensive plan. I, I think what we were asking for here is that, so when we, when we come to council in the future with individual land use changes, there's a fiscal, um, there's a way to present quickly, uh, fiscal impact with this.
Okay, I thought they were providing you that, but, okay. Um, and then the other thing was.
They would, but they want to charge more for it.
Um, the, one thing I've brought up a couple of times is just in our budgeting and just the way that we're looking at infrastructure, I didn't really see any place where we're talking about planning for replacement or renovations, um, for our facilities. And that to me, I thought should be at least acknowledged in the plan when we're talking about how we're planning for the future.
There, there was a piece of that, I believe, that came out and into that separate standalone document, but we can relook at that.
Okay.
That was one of my questions because we, how, how are we even talking about the court? Um, we've got to do something and we've got to take action. And what kind of plan does each one of our buildings have? So that we know when boilers are going, we know when furnaces are going, we know when roofs have to be done, all of those things. Where is a master plan that we're taking care of?
Facilities, maintenance and replacement financing master plan or something like that, maybe that's.
Yeah, you know, the general services was pretty active in the plan, but I, I don't recall a, a deep discussion on that. But we did have some language, um, thinking broadly about, you know, the system of utilities, streets, drainage, et cetera. Uh, and I believe that got, that was some of the language that went to that separate document to shorten.
I, I did see stuff about utilities and infrastructure, which is different to me than the courthouse, the buildings that house the work that we're doing. Yeah, yeah.
And we can look at, I haven't had my capital improvement plan brief yet and, and how we do that and what that looks like over five years. And so certainly something that was a lesson learned in Jamesville previously. And so we'll certainly take a look at that because that's one of those that if you don't stay on top of it, you don't have a plan, um, you fall behind and then you can't catch up. So.
And we've been talking about the court since 2012.
Indeed.
We can work that.
Okay.
We, we have a consensus on including.
Um, all right, one last slightly picky thing. The neighborhood unit with the 20 minute walk and bike. A 20 minute bike ride to me doesn't seem like a neighborhood situation. So we just quit saying that and just focus it on the 20 minute walk. And they want people to bike.
Ride your bike.
What a twen- 20 minute bike ride could be like.
See me ride a bike.
We will never see me ride one. Um, okay, and my last, aside from the big one, was the measures that you would be coming back to on a biannual basis. And I, there were a few things where I thought, um, have we thought about, well, what actually defines success for our community and how do we, how are we actually? for our community and how do we, how are we actually measuring that? There were things like in the transportation and mobility, you know, are we, when we're talking about safety, are we looking at the number of crashes? Have those reduced? Why isn't that something that we're looking at? Or bike lanes, like the number of miles that we have. And there may be other things like trail connections or what have you. So that was just this other layer of just real finite numbers that I think would actually signify, hey, we're making progress and would give the community too, something to track. And I would love to see that we have less crashes.
Can I piggyback on that real quick?
Yeah.
On the, I think on the like bike lanes and stuff too, like I would be curious some way to measure whether or not they're being used, whether or not you're seeing, like, you do like traffic studies. So like, I know I harped on Lock Hundredth Avenue and Sims and the changes in those. So it would be, it would be valuable to me to be able to know whether or not there's being used in all the places that we've added bike lanes, decreased car lanes on the other end of it, not just are we adding bike lanes, but are they actually being utilized? Because we do have to maintain those. So I mean, say, for example, you cut down a four lane road to two lanes and you added bike lanes, but the bike lanes aren't being used, but the car lanes are actually sufficient for what they're being used. That's real dollars in asphalt every time you have to go and replace that road. So I think that there's some value in understanding whether or not we hit the mark with where we put the bike lanes.
Or you increase the number of really mad middle school parents.
And definitely I am sensitive to that, being one of those mad middle school parents.
Just a few other suggestions. In the health, wellness and community services section, are we looking at air quality, food access? How many people, for instance, might have access to a grocery within a certain distance? These are some of the, you can look at, Denver has some great measures that they utilize to look at health and wellbeing. Are we looking at homeless number, homelessness number, you know, numbers of people experiencing homelessness? Are we looking at a portion of community, of our community that's in poverty? Or on the other side of that, household incomes, are they increasing? Is our educational attainment increasing? All of these things, I think, would signify that the work we're doing is actually, you know, actually helping our community have greater resilience. On the other side of household incomes, you could look at how many of our residents are cost burdened or house burdened. So there's that. When it comes to economic and financial resilience, you know, I'd love to see something like, you know, the number of primary employment jobs. I don't know if that's something that we can pull out, but if that's one of our goals, we could be tracking it. Again, I think educational attainment is another piece of that because educational attainment has a big impact on our retail ability to attract retail and these primary employers. And then instead of the total number of affordable housing developments, I think we should be tracking.
Finally, I will stop talking.
Comprehensive plan filibuster. So is that, again, is that something the majority of council would like to include with the? Is this something we're able to do without consulting?
Probably, yeah. That was my question, if we can track these numbers without spending any more money.
We're gonna have to look into that a little bit.
How much is that then brought, because I see this more like baseline, like you have in here, right? And then I see what Councilor Miller just outlined as more strategic plan oriented and more in the details of those, not necessarily comp plan related. I could be wrong, but I don't necessarily see those details in a ten year, twenty year.
This is what we were tracking in Denver. This is what we'll be tracking in Erie. What we're gonna be tracking, I mean, this is something that, measures that are indicators. They're indicators for our demographic and our economic success and our, the policies that we have in here helping. We could be tracking vacancies, retail and office vacancies. What do we know when we're looking at, why even have these policies if we aren't, why even have a plan?
But I don't know if that's necessarily in the overall structure, right? There's transportation plan, that's a whole nother document. There is a economic and financial resilience plan, a whole nother document. Same with the housing, they're gonna go into a study, that's a whole other document. It plays overall into this document.
How do you functionally, and this is back to the other thing, it's like how, like in Erie or Denver, how would you take those, those statistics or KPIs or whatever you want to call them? And then functionally say, okay, we have these other developments coming forward. Here's how I'm going to apply this data. Is that something that you do in that process? Because if it is, I'd be interested to hear how you would do that. Because to me, that's what this is, is you're applying this to development. So if you could take primary jobs and apply it to what development you're gonna pick or it's gonna be brought forward. Like, how does that functionally work?
So we have policies in here about working with our school districts to help improve educational outcomes and job training, which hopefully would help us, again, move people into a higher, you know, help them get higher incomes, but at the same time, increase their educational attainment, which then again, as I mentioned, feeds into, you know, right now, we don't have a great educational attainment demographic within Westminster, which impacts our ability to get retail, which impacts people saying, we don't have good retail here. So there's this chain of events. If people don't have, if they're cost burdened, are we looking at more housing options? Whether that's town homes or working to get workforce housing in the city. There are a lot of elements here that we could track in a little more detail.
I guess I just don't see though how that, even if you track, how we have control of this document around changing some of those things. I mean, they're not bad to know.
Well, we should probably get rid of some of the policies that we don't care about then, if we're not gonna track them and care.
I guess, I would just say is, when I did this in another community and thinking of that experience when this was being drafted, I was looking for things that we know where to find the information and that it's easy to track on a regular basis. And the people that have the numbers are willing to provide you updated information. Because that was the challenge I had in this other community, that people wouldn't respond to my repeated request response. So these were based on things that I felt like, okay, I know where to find these, they're updated regularly, we can report back on them. Some of these sound very easy to do, but, you know, having not actually checked all those out, I don't, I wouldn't want to promise, yes, this is something we could report on all the time if there's not willing partners.
My suggestion is to not use everything that I just listed. It was to identify the things that lead into the success of our policies.
Okay.
And, you know, get a little more detail so that we can track things. You know, whether it's the crashes or the household incomes or educational attainment.
Yeah, why don't we, we have a fairly good list here. We can group with our partners and look at, you know, what are the things that we think are easily to report back to when council and that are meaningful.
Next. Mr. Baker, Councilor Baker.
I like it. I think we should make a new plan. I want to include the water savings on the redevelopment and that other component. Think those are all good. I have a couple of questions. What is the most accurate land use designation? Is it map three point two?
That sounds right, yeah.
Okay. So that answers my questions about several of the properties that I asked about because they seem to have gone from a proposed residential medium density back to the office employment designation. Thirteen, sixteen, and thirty five.
It's correct.
Yeah, because they have been office employment, well, office R and D low density.
And they've gone back there.
Except for eighty four. Except for eighty four, North Gate. And if I'm reading the map correctly, you intended the continued mixed use neighborhood, but outside the city boundaries.
No, eighty four is.
Park Gate.
Yeah.
Twenty seven point eight acres.
Yeah, it's fully inside the city. The alternative proposal proposes to lower it to the residential low density.
Okay. So then on map three point two, where it has mixed use neighborhood in unincorporated Adams County is just, who knows what that.
That's the existing.
Use there.
Componio development.
Very good. Then my other question is, so can we do the water calculation now?
Well, we, the, so the employment sites, the vacant sites, that was two hundred and twenty two acre feet reduction. The mixed use was another.
Well, instead of doing the reduction, we just calculate?
Yeah, we just.
Councilor, could you flesh that out a little bit for us?
Sure, absolutely. I sent the email. Did you get the email?
I saw an email, but I'd like to hear you.
Okay. So basically, according to the information we've been given, how much is the vacant land gonna need for water? How many acre feet range or approximation or whatever?
So you're asking minus any sort of conservation.
Right, right, right. Minus any sort of conservation because, because we'll get into argument over what conservation.
I was gonna say, that's.
That toilet flushes one point two eight versus three, that's conservation. Letting lawns and trees die is not conservation.
I guess we approached it from, you know, an October third, council challenged staff to reduce water use. So we went through using that online tool, saying, okay, this side, we can lower it here, we can lower this one. And so we were keeping a running total of what those savings were. So that's what we were.
Okay, well, in that August, October third meeting, the range was a thousand to thirteen hundred, right? I've got it here someplace. Roughly, I'm rounding off.
Thousand, say that again.
A thousand acre feet of water to thirteen hundred acre feet of water. So if we're saving two hundred and thirty five on one project, and what were the other savings?
It's two, twenty two on the other, and then another fifty, so it's like five hundred and seven.
So, so we're down to anywhere between six hundred and eight hundred acre feet of water.
As a balance, or what does that six to eight hundred feet represent? I'm not sure.
Let me, let me.
Can I ask if I understand?
Sure.
Councilor Baker, are you asking, because there was a gap, are you asking a gap in today without conservancy?
Yes, that's specifically what I'm going to look for.
At all, and you're at today and you were at the build out that this plan lays out, would we, what would the gap be?
Right, exactly.
If you ignore all conservation, all, even existing conservation, everything, everything that we're talking about vacant would have to be open space and that still wouldn't do it.
No, if you make it all open space, you're only at nine hundred and eighty.
You cannot ignore conservation. It's counterintuitive to say, let's ignore any sort of conservation. I used my examples earlier. Those are real. Those are what's trending for years. It would be, you know, this is all about factors of safety, right? The factor of safety to ignore all conservation is so incredible that we don't have anything else to do here.
Do you mind if I make a point on this to your turn?
I don't disagree with you, but the bottom line is if no conservancy happened and we didn't have the water tomorrow, we would build to it. So, I mean, I think that's the point that I wanted to make earlier. And I mean, I don't want to ignore conservancy, we have to pay attention to it. But that's why we would want to track year to year, because then if for some reason trends are going the wrong way, we would want to stop building and recalibrate what we're doing.
Exactly. Right. And I wanted to put it into numbers instead of words. And I think we can put it into numbers instead of words. Well, this is the email I sent manager Freitag. And it asked a direct question. So I thought we were going to talk about it in this meeting. Okay? Because I used the baseline of what the city consumes as twenty one thousand acre feet. This peak right there. Okay, so that I use as a baseline. And then I added to it the numbers you gave us for entitled projects, but that aren't built so using water. And that was two thousand acre feet, right? And if this is, and this is eight hundred acre feet, that adds up to twenty three thousand eight hundred acre feet, right?
I'm not following your math, Councilor. It's, it's a moot point. If you're, if you're trying to calculate something that ignores all conservation, we don't have, there's nothing left for us to discuss.
Well, don't be so grim about it.
Councilor, I might interject here. We don't do water supply planning in the method that you're using here for a few different reasons.
Way I calculated, we're only four hundred acre feet away from having enough water with this comprehensive plan. And I think if we look at the specific plans, there might be the water there.
Let's let Sarah answer.
In the approved plan for water usage, in the approved plan for water uses, it has entitled as about two thousand acre feet. Okay, and that's composed of, and I jumbled up my papers, so I don't have them. Here we go, right there. In the entitled water plan, it has two thousand acre feet. Okay, and this is composed of approved really developments in progress or very recently built, two hundred and twenty one acre feet. And I'm using the enhanced conservation, the low end. Well, the Uplands water budget of seven seventy eight, the TO budget, the TOD budget of four fifty three, and the downtown Westminster remaining budget of five hundred and sixty one. And first of all, Uplands told us that instead of needing seven seventy eight, they could do it for five thirty five. So there's two hundred acre feet right there. And I have a hard time believing if we have fifty five acres of remaining land at the new downtown, that they will need five hundred and sixty one acre feet of water. That's like ten acre feet of water per acre. And if we're gonna build office buildings, office buildings only use what, two acre feet of water per acre? So there might be enough savings there to bring us to the twenty three thousand four hundred acre feet.
Okay, can Sarah answer what she wanted to say?
Thank you, thank you. So there's a couple of reasons why we don't do water supply planning that way. When we talk about really specific numbers like that, it doesn't take. When we talk about really specific numbers like that, it doesn't take into the account that we could see change, not in just land use type with the comp plan, but if you think of a commercial area that maybe there's a shoe stair, shoe store there now, it could be a restaurant in the future. And that's where we really start talking about what are the ranges of possible water supply, these different land use types they use today or in the future. Um, and so that's where, when we start, we get really hesitant to provide, council asked for these numbers, so we provided them. Um, but we get really antsy when we start getting really precise numbers, because it's not a good way of really, uh, ascertaining what our future water needs might be. And so, we don't look at it in terms of what is built, cause that might change. We don't look at it in terms of what is entitled, um, because how you define that is different. How Andrew defines that is actually different than how public works defines that, because we won't consider something fully built for our modeling until we've got two years of good water data behind it. So he's gonna take the same parcel and call it something different than what we would call it, based on his needs are different than our needs, excuse me. Um, so what we do is we look at the entire land use map, we apply acre feet per acre to the entire land use map, and we look at what the whole city at build out is gonna be. So that lets us see kind of big picture, we need X number of acre feet between A and B acre feet. It's a range, because we can't know for certain what each of those things are gonna be. So I think some of your questions, I, I hear you asking them, and some of our hesitation is we don't, we don't do any of our math that way. And so, it's almost like having to backtrack out of our modeling in order to try and answer the questions that you have. Now, I will say, cause I know you were talking a little bit, Counselor, you had a question in your email about what if conservation, um, flatlines? And that's actually one of the scenarios that we built into the model. Um, so if you wanna get in there and look at it, the short answer is we have more risk. If our conservation trends flatline, there's more risk to the city for running out of water. Um, it's not insurmountable, um, but there is risk there. We're probably in the confidence level of eighty percent or so of having enough water in that scenario. Um, but there is more risk, so the more we conserve, the less risk we are, no matter which land use decisions we make. I hope that makes sense.
And that's eighty percent without these annual, uh, reports that we're going to do on, on usage. And again, that's, that's sort of our purpose here, is to make sure we don't get ourselves into that kind of situation where it's even only eighty percent, uh, success probability.
Well, I guess what I was gonna say was, I'm sorry, Counselor, but, you know, what we heard coming out of October third was, I believe a challenge to reduce, reduce water use, I think by a thousand acre feet was the number that was said. Well, we found even going to open space, and we got us nine hundred and eight, so that's like, what, what's the mix of land uses we could recommend that would get us? Um, well, actually only about halfway there, about five hundred and seven acre feet is what we identified. So, that's, that's where we were coming from with our numbers.
I had a question on, um, you were talking about, um, does the, the, what's the, the variability of commercial versus residential? Does that have any, is there any difference between the two, and sort of the residential being a lot more static than commercial employment uses?
Um, can I still hear a copy of this?
Yeah, I was like, you might, I have the bar chart here too.
Yeah, so if you look at, and this is small, um, but when you look at the bar chart that has the number of acre feet per area, you can see some, um, have a really short grade out area, and those are the ones that we feel pretty confident in. They're pretty consistent residential uses are some of our more, um, we can, we know more about how much they're gonna use. Commercial is one, uh, employment office, I'm just trying to look at the colors here, that's, that one is better. So if you look at employment office, that has a large gradient, just because you end up with all kinds of different stuff in there from a water use perspective, so.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised to learn that medical offices are major water user. That was, that was a news, news to me.
To the point, we almost pulled it out for our water supply planning.
I remember that.
Yep, yeah.
Oh, I, I am really surprised to hear that you sent you said, we've been forty-six.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, forty-three percent less. So I'm just, you know, as we kind of refine, as you get your two years of use, I mean, that might, um, Counselor Baker, you're, in some ways, some of this is a bit premature, cause we, we can't actually get some better data from more recent developments and kind of look at our assumptions, and maybe we are doing better than we thought.
But even if we use those calculations, we're still within striking distance now, cause that was your bottom line.
Yeah.
So that's a positive.
He's happy. He said it was a go. He could stop now.
Yeah, so, either way, so, I mean, and that, that's why, um, I'll save that for my general comments, but on this, thank you.
See, because what we're trying to do is we're not, is we're trying not to overpromise, not only for new people moving in here, but for our current residents. So I found there was some light at the end of, end of this tunnel. See, because I completely disagree with the use of conservation. If you have a toilet that does the same job with a gallon less, that's conservation. But you look at yards in our city, that's not conservation. You're using less water, but that's not conservation. For me, those are a result of the supply-demand curve for water, and we're using price to chase out current users. And I don't like that.
Understood. And, and again, the vast majority of our conservation comes from indoor use.
And that has a finite endpoint to it, too.
Certainly would. I'm not sure what that is, but at some point, all fixtures have been changed out.
Right.
But who knows what the future of technology may hold also.
And I can't have a front loading washer because I couldn't help my knitting stuff that needs helping.
I was, I was gonna actually say.
You cannot do it in a front load.
Our wife could reach inside.
It's the same reason I can't have a flat top stove, you can't can on it, you have to have your can around it. Anything else?
Uh, no, that was it.
Counselor Emmons, we haven't heard from you.
Did you? I'm gathering my thoughts.
Well, I'll give you all the time you need for that then. I'll, I'll, just, um, I appreciate that you heard what we said and the adjustments here. Thank you very much for the five hundred and seven acre feet, very much. I appreciate Mr. Spurgeon, you had less gray hair when we started this. Thank you, thank you for hanging in with counsel. I appreciate it very much. So, um, yeah, I'm, as, as overall, you know, that's my executive summary, and that's where I live, so.
So I had about one percent of Councilman Miller's questions that was answered in her, in her questioning. I do have one remaining question, and that's related to duplexes, triplexes. In this future world, what happens to those?
Um, we, we don't have a lot of that in Westminster, actually, but that would, uh, generally be in our residential medium, uh, type of land use. Typically, eight units per acre. Uh, we have permitted, um, in, in past comprehensive plans, duplex development, actually, in our, um, our three point five, which is now the residential low category. But typically, those are not of the density level that would require the multifamily designation. So, I believe this plan would, would support that, as well as the townhome and similar, uh, type of, the sort of in-between type housing.
And what about alternative products like tiny homes?
Um, we've, we've had a few conversations about that. Uh, it's been a little while, um, there, there's actually some, there's actually some impediments on the building code side of the world, uh, to those, but I, 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 I know, um, I believe next year we're anticipating new codes, and we can talk to the building official if, if that's something, uh, that perhaps is, is loosened up as compared to older codes.
Which codes prevent that?
Uh, well, there's, there's really a.
Nothing prevents it.
It's, it's just hard for tiny homes to meet, um, the energy requirements, fire code, mechanical code, all those kind of things, um, is, in my experience, um, and, and also just the cost of the land, people end up pursuing something greater than a tiny home, but, that's an interesting idea, though. That's something council would like to explore. Uh, I would see a tiny home development as a group of tiny homes sooner than I would anticipate someone buying a single family lot for a tiny home, cause the, the land's just too expensive.
Can, can we explore that? Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? When you refer, when you use the term tiny homes, typically what we've seen in tiny homes are, uh, sorry, I shouldn't stand it. Are homes built on a chassis, you know, they're not permanently affixed to the ground through a foundation or a basement or something. Are you referring to more of a permanent house constructed, uh, in the traditional sense? Or is it more of the true sense of a tiny home, uh, that's on a chassis and can be moved? Cause that, that's typically the way they get around a lot of the building code issues, but I'm not sure exactly how.
I think seeing both would be nice, seeing all the options, if council agrees.
And that was on my list, because I know, um, at a different mayor's, um, meeting, Longmont's got something they've had for several years now for their veterans that are homeless, and they have a pretty good system set up up there, and they do have a camp, um, that forms community. So my question is, do we, because you think of mobile homes, and we know what's happened with whoever owns that land. So do we have property that we would be able to control, that they don't have rents for their, what they're sitting on, where's the, triple what? House payments or whatever. But anyway, I, I, I don't, I, I've seen some places that work. I don't understand how, what the codes and all of that, but other places are able to do it. So, I just think for the people that don't have homes right at the moment, um, it could be an answer. It's probably something even with growing home folks that they work with that help transition. Um, I don't know, I, I just know that's a missing piece, because ADUs are way too expensive. I've heard that from, from every city that does it or has it, and has the ability to do it, it, it doesn't make sense.
Three hundred thousand to develop one.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense.
Might as well just build a regular house at that point.
Yeah, so, um, so that was on my list, um, and I'll just go over my list, cause between these two, they hit every point. Um, you know that I believe we don't just build, we build to water and then we're done. We don't have to be, I, I just get so sick of hearing all the commercials, any meeting I go to, even at the Jeffco meeting, we were just at, no build, build, because we need this, we need that. Folks, we can only build to the water that, because I believe we have a responsibility to be able to offer and have water when they turn it on, it comes out the faucet, if they're gonna live in the city of Westminster. We aren't gonna get more water, we have what we have, and I don't think we should be planning for every drop of it. I think it's great when I hear forty-three percent of something. Well, don't then plan you need to build this to take up their other part. We, there are gonna be days we need that extra. And so we need to decide what we need to look like, what we need to have, be, to be able to be sustainable and be happy. Um, and we do have those redevelopment opportunities to continue to always be looking, okay, what's missing here? What do we need to bring back, or whatever? But it's, this is a motion thing, and you have done a great job of hearing what we said. I know we were frustrated, um, having it brought back just sitting on a shelf for six months, and I, I don't know if you thought the pages were, or the words were gonna change on the page or what, they didn't, and so we were probably a little harsh, but you listened, and we have a good product. And we're able, we know it isn't, this is the way it's gonna be, and that's it. We know, we can talk about it. Um, just as we did with Uplands when they came, and, um, I still think of front end process to help with the developer like that. Um, and I don't know where we're at with that broom-filled process, but, um, I know it has saved their bacon more times than not, because the community and the council can look at it and say, you know, for this area, that's what they used for, uh, up by our Walnut Creek, and they were gonna put apartment building, and they knew all the stuff going up there. Instead, they wiped it off, and they're putting more of a five parks area up there. So that helped a developer not get five years into something with millions of dollars and be told, this isn't gonna work. So I, I, again, I, I think that's a good process, and I'm just happy to hear you all verify, we have on tape, we can constantly look at this. I was at the Victorian Christmas on Saturday, and we talked about CJ Harris, cause we were giving tours, and, you know, he was one of the first people here. And the teeters live in his home, and it is beautiful on the inside that they've redone. But I was reminded of what his original vision for this city was. And, um, he believed everybody should have a fruit tree in their yard, and that was a requirement at the time. Now, that's before we had water. That was, you had the clouds water your yard. Um, he, he made every house have space. He believed every child, every family needed space. He actually was the forebearer of open space. I mean, he knew, um, everybody needed that country and to play and to have space. So he had enough, um, space in between his homes. And so, having read this again this weekend, um, there was a piece of him there that, um, you've captured, whether you know it or not. And so, um, I had the banana property, and we've answered that. Um, I just didn't know if we had made decisions about it, or RTD had said, no, we don't need it, or, you know. And since I'm asking about RTD, are they ever gonna look at making that a station at Westminster? I mean, not bus, the train, um, more frequent, or is it still because of, um, operators? Yeah.
We have a transportation planner here.
And I have a meeting with her on Thursday, we meet with the thirty-six winners. I just don't know.
I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I don't know either, because that's a deterrent right now. We'd have better ridership if it went ever. When I was having to go down to meetings, and it, because of the walk, we've got the longest walk of any of the rail stations. If you were not there, it goes and you have an hour to wait, and so it's not conducive. I think those were my other points besides what everybody else said.
Not to regurgitate, but I agree with everything, everything they all said. And then the RTD piece, I said it in the last, uh, plan is, what is, I, I'm a little too concerned that the plan focuses heavily on rail. And I just, I get very apprehensive about twenty years, nineteen years ago, that we were, you know, that RTD said that we're gonna build, things change, I get that. Um, but, uh, I, I feel like we're relying a little too much on that in our plan. And I think it could end up hurting us in some sense.
I'm sorry, in the comprehensive plan or in the specific plan of stationary?
Both. I mean, it's listed in the comp plan.
Okay.
In various areas. So that's where I get a little apprehensive on that. But difficult to read on some of the things that was already mentioned. And then the water, along with everybody else, that, hey, I, this is now my second or third time bringing this up, but I so wish that we could have that staff brought forward for context for the public. What we see or what we had an ability to see with staff when it came to if we changed a variable here, this is what a variable outcome could be. And it could be this small or it could be this small. I think that for visually, for visual context, I feel like that was just an appropriate enlightening tool that staff sees on the backend and it's not necessarily inherently understood on the frontend. When we're saying that we're changing X, Y, Z on a comp plan, you can say the numbers don't change all you want. But unless someone, unless you can see it the way that council was able to sit with staff and say, okay, show us what you mean, but it doesn't change at all. And in your perspective, it changed, you know, a quarter of a percent, which is very little in big number terms. So I think it's another, while this is great and I, I appreciate the hard work that's, that staff has put in to change the, the comp plan. I think it was a miss on, again, not being able to contextually put into perspective just what those changes could look like and what, what, how that relates then to when we make decisions. So I, I wish that could be brought forward. If we talk about this again in another context, it might be good to bring forward. Just as a 15-minute presentation of this is, this is what we look at.
That water supply model that we demonstrated with council this summer?
You're not talking about having that, any things like that?
Not, not for us to be like, can you change this? Not for us to like, but like, just a contextually like, okay. We brought this in front of council and we changed X, Y, Z. And just to put into perspective, we're going to put this in our model and this is how we calculated that. So it's already pre-planned. It's not for us to like, you know, sit here and play. We've already done that. It's for staff to show on the backend how you make those decisions, how you've seen with your modeling that you all put together, that you put hours into trying to figure out what these variables look like on a comprehensive level. You're looking at me like I, you have no idea what
I just told him, I think I understand.
Oh, okay. I was like, I'm reading your body like
The poker face.
It's after 10:30. I'm not at my sharpest. You know, the Pollo Works Utilities Department has a, has an excellent video series. I watch them on YouTube. I think they're available on other platforms, but we could, we could promote one about, hey, this is how we're planning for water slide. We could have Sarah or whoever showing the, you know, the little graph change, you change this, you move that. You know, that, that'd be something we could easily put together.
I think it'd be, if you're just promoting it online, I think that would be rubbed wrong. I, I feel like it needs some kind of context of like what we just went over, right?
Is there a way when this comes to council and you're presenting an overview or approval? Is there a way that you could show what we have, what we went through last summer? That we could show when we said, well, why don't we put this development here and we saw the water just go out of Stanley Lake? Or we said something and you could barely tell that we put something there? If you just were able to show, here's what this was, here's what we've done, people could see, we really do have something working.
That, that sounds like something that's easily
Should be like super simple, like what you showed us.
Yeah, now
You're driving it, five minutes, that's it.
And I do, I know you asked personally, the apartments that are in retail spaces, number one, for an entire, I don't know how long it's been going, and that bridge has been closed. You hurt the businesses because our neighborhood couldn't get over there safely. Because we use the bridge, we use the over
Common name.
Yeah, overhead bridge. I, I was over, somebody wanted to meet me for coffee, so we went to Caribou. I couldn't get out because I had to be in the right-hand lane that you'd normally go then south on Westminster Boulevard. It was not triggering the light and the workers could care less sitting over here. And so there was a car sitting here that was trying to get a turn to come in and I'm trying to go out. She finally went on a red light so she could get in and I went on red light to get out. But that's just because of the mess there. When you look at, and it's what you said about having the, you look at the, the apartments that are along Westminster Boulevard behind Fat Cat, what the neighbors call that. They have some space. They have, able to walk their dogs up and down there. They are not on top of the sidewalk. This is on top of, they can shake hands with the people going past them with the cars. And I don't know what that inside, if there is an inside that there have a blade of grass. But I wouldn't want to raise a child there. They have nothing but pavement. I don't know what thinking went into, that's a good space. And I'm told there's maybe two more that are going to be allowed there. I just think it's insanity. But
I lived in a condo with my baby and child. I didn't mind it.
If it was a condo, I wouldn't care because they could at least buy it. This is rental. It's ridiculous.
If I may, I'll go through, I think maybe some of the items, we want to make sure there's council consensus on and then the more perfunctory things will just land in.
Clean up the other stuff.
Before we go through the final list, I wanted to throw support behind the tiny home and at least to get information back. I didn't know if we got full or vote, but I, I think the other piece of it that I'd like to hear when it comes back though is, and under the mayor's point, whatever we do that it's along with some nonprofit or management, because really the whole concept there is there's got to be a program that goes around it, much like what we see in what we're doing with the homeless in Jefferson County. So whoever that is. But today, we've heard it enough that I think we should at least have the discussion with some actual data.
There's anybody that doesn't want it?
Yeah, I, I don't think I answered that. Maybe it's best like, there's nothing in the comp plan that would preclude a tiny home village. It's just, what are the things the city could do to better facilitate?
For clarity, is it for the specific, is it housing, of housing the homeless or transitioning homeless? Or is it for the general population?
To me, it's much like what the mayor said. There's certain populations that nationally we're seeing those programs do well, like veterans. For example, giving them back into the swing of things. You know, so there's probably other demographics that
Older Americans. Low-income veterans. There's a lot of populations that benefit with homes that are affordable. And those are just more, it's more affordable just because of the size.
So it could be permanent housing, not just transitional housing. Be a lot of things.
I mean, obviously people have done it successfully. So it would be interesting to see naturally what's been done successfully.
I told city manager Friday take about the one in Longmont and I haven't been able to get up there, but I'd love to go and see what they're doing and how they did it. Maybe I'll be lucky and get to talk to mayor of Longmont Thursday.
Do a tour? A council tour?
Road trip.
Road trip?
I'd say it'd be very important where we locate this.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Almost, that should be the
Anyway, you have yes. What else do you need? Yeses to, I haven't heard too many noes.
I was gonna, I'm, I'm looking at the, the list of items Mayor Proton Demont sent in terms of, of the things that maybe we want to ensure there's a council majority of support for. I'm looking here. He asked, or he identified that he has concerns about making Brookhill too dense, the apartments look very crowded, out of place. What is the proper way to address that? A couple of things there, I guess. With that second part of our alternative proposal, we actually were proposing to remove the mixed use from the 57 acres balance of Brookhill to the south. That would be, that's sort of the low-hanging fruit answer. The, a bolder change to the comp plan would be if you wanted to remove Brookhill as a focus area altogether.
I don't, to me, I don't think that's necessary. I think with the change you just mentioned, I didn't realize. So that's a bright direction. I guess my only other question, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just want to make sure that this is the case. If, you know, there was a change that came forward, it would have to come to council at this point with some of the other changes we made correct. So it wouldn't just be a foregone conclusion if they decided they weren't going to add some of that density. We'd have to specifically look at it and decide that was right for the area.
Yes, I would agree with that. What I would say is, you know, the, the alternative proposal staff proposed included removing the 57 acres to the south. The 14 acres to the north where Murdochs and Free Margaritas and there is other things. That is one of the two vested properties that we did not include because they have recently approved development rights that would allow multifamily on that northern portion.
I think I should mention, we have been in communication with the property owner and I do believe there is some interest in moving another rather large multifamily component in accordance with those PDP approvals from 2019. But that, any project containing a multifamily component will be brought forth to the city council for your approval.
I don't, I'm not, I guess I would agree with the rest of the council today, but I specifically will look at it with a very close eye. But I'm, I don't think I'm ready to say, don't, don't bring something forward. I just think that we need to really look at it. I understand that's a main, main road, but it certainly has added a lot of, a lot of heads over there. And it doesn't look the way that I anticipated it looking. I mean, to be honest, it's pretty busy over there. So you know, with that being said, I think they, you could let them bring it as far as I'm concerned, but be a bit critical about exactly what they're doing to make sure that it's not so much density that it's going to really kill that area.
I believe we covered the other items through, through the other parts of the discussion that maybe required others. So I think the other ones are, are more basic and we, we can send you the answers this week.
Thank you.
I think you're good to go. Change the font, change the color. Make that, make the make the charts understandable.
I just want to make sure that, that everybody's in agreement that as presented tonight, these, this alternative comprehensive plan we shared is acceptable in concept. We've got some editing to do, you know, some contrasting to do, font size, a lot of those sorts of things. But conceptually, what was laid out is acceptable and we can now take that, start to refine it, start to go, you know, build towards a final draft. And we can start to talk to some of the property owners, which are going to see a, you know, downsizing, if you will, in their zoning. And after we do that, then we take this back to the plan commission, work that process, then back to the council for approval, adoption, et cetera. And timeline on that would be March?
I would, I would anticipate probably March, late February, but March would be more realistic. We're, we need to meet with those property owners. There's going to be quite a few of them. And with the holidays, I'm just not sure how quickly we'll get those. Some of the owners are out of state or out of the country even. But we really want to make an effort to personally contact them and help them understand both what the change is proposed, but what their options might be.
I'll just poll council. Yes?
Yes.
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 For the record, no on the alternatives, but otherwise, yes for the comp plan.
Good. And thank you very much for your patience and working through this with us. It's been a long process. And I think the discussion this evening was very productive. So we appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you flip it out, mayor, I have the email out to council about the strategic plan. I meant to bring it up earlier. Is that something that we're all comfortable on Monday night and not a Saturday? Because traditionally we've done that on a Saturday. Everybody's a little bit pressure in my opinion on a Saturday. And it's consistent with what we've done in the past. About the strategic planning. Right now it's planned for the fifth Monday. In the past, we've done that on a Saturday.
What's Saturday?
Are we going to change too much, do you think?
What Monday is?
30. Yeah.
I had sent an email out just asking the question. Because in the past, we've done it on a Saturday.
On the 30th, Saturdays are for families.
It's three hours total? Is that a good idea?
Our thought was three hours or less. You already have a strategic plan. You all were the ones who came up with the one that's in place. So there's not, theoretically, there wouldn't be a significant amount of time for it, you know. Right now, you're approving ordinances on Monday night, you're approving budgets on Monday nights. And so it seemed that a strategic plan on a Monday night would certainly be a reasonable conversation also. But certainly sensitive to people's work-life balance and taking a Saturday away.
I would love to preserve my Saturdays so my Monday night.
And for Saturday, just because, now do I. By 9:30, I was exhausted and I literally, it was very, I was eating so that I could concentrate. So that's just me. I come in with a fresh, fresh perspective. I don't have anything on my plate other than coming in to council on Saturday.
I think the other thing that we need to think about a Monday night is, is, you know, it's a known quantity for the public. It's broadcast, it's taped, we're set up so the public can participate. You go offsite on a Saturday morning, it's just not on the public's front radar and it's
Where are we set up for?
Yeah, but it's on a, my only point is it's on a Saturday. So it's just not part of people's rhythm.
Honestly, if, if the majority says Monday, obviously I'll be here on Monday, but it is one of the most important, critical things that we do. This is my multiple times that I've been through it. It's not more than any, everybody here. Because obviously the mayor's been through it more times than I have and Council Baker is probably about the same amount of times. But I just thought it was worth the discussion because that's out of the ordinary because of what it is. And sometimes, as we've seen tonight, this group, we were all passionate about what we're doing. And this is, the strategic plan is what drives everything staff does. So it's a, I mean, specifically for, for your newer folks, I think it's an opportunity that I wanted to at least make sure you were comfortable doing it on a weeknight.
I originally, well, I responded to yours. I had said Saturday.
So Bruce and Rich, where are you at?
I'm for your Monday.
I'm benign on the whole point, but
At that point, there's four that said Monday. All right. You're, you're reprieved, sir.
I wasn't counting. See, I can't even count.
We only have three on Monday. He's the, it's three and three right now.
We only had three on Monday. He's the, it's three and three right now. I said Sun, I said Saturday.
Yeah, you're the same.
Right.
No, I was wrong. Dean, I can't count this late on a Monday.
We do a lot of things on Saturdays.
I, I, I'm, I'm on, um, if we were fundamentally rebuilding our strategic plan, I would say we'd have to do it on Saturday.
Sure.
But I think we can do that on Monday. So, and if not, lesson learned.
Yeah. And I don't disagree since I'm the one who brought it up and forced it. I really wanted to make sure that the, the new folks are, because ultimately there were also things that you guys lobbied for, you didn't get. So this was, was your opportunity and
I think if.
You wanted to not be here all night Monday, that's, that's, that's a, you know.
I highly doubt we'll lobby for something and actually get it regardless. So.
What are you talking about?
I think if, if, if we can stay here Monday nights till one o'clock, which we've done many times on policy, we can stay for the same. It's, for me, there's no difference Saturday morning versus.
I would hope we're not going to go to one on the strategic.
No, I think we, we need to.
Well, if, if four of us leave, you'll have to, right?
Again, I'm just wanting to give a fair shake because that's how it's always been done for me in the past and it's that's your opportunity.
But I hope we still have the same opportunity on Monday.
No, no.